Brian Zakely, he's the town planner and he's also the host of this meeting. Next is Nancy, our recording secretary. We have Diaggerius, who is our secretary of record with the state, but also we have the vice chair Heather Hannan. And let's see, Maureen Meister. And I believe that we do not have Cheryl here, correct?
Correct, but the town engineer is here as well.
Oh, yep, there she is.
And Cheryl's coming in now.
Okay, and Beth Rudolph, who is the town engineer, is also with us today. We will also be having our town council, I'm not sure who they're sending today as a representative for our town council. We have on our agenda, a pretty packed agenda, we have a lot of things we need to move through and rather quickly. And so everyone knows we are on Wind Cam, we are being recorded, we also are broadcasted on their stations, but also we are recorded and then they release recordings online for those who want to review this or have access to any of our meetings at a later date. Or are not available to be with us at this moment. Going onward, for updates, there's actually a bunch of things going on. Brian, do you want to kick it off with some of the things that you are up to?
Terms of budget updates, sorry?
Oh, just general updates.
Yeah, no, sir, so I thought you said budget updates and I was saying we have an agenda item about that. I was like, yeah, we're gonna talk about that for a while. Sure, so this week we're supposed to determine the local historic district study committee representative from the historical commission, but that meeting was postponed until next week. But I've actually set up a reboot meeting for that group, the LHD study committee for Friday, 12:18. We always met on Fridays at 9:00 AM, so I'm gonna continue that. And maybe it'll, we'll see what they come back with in terms of time, but the goal is still to have at least a a quick meeting there. I confirm with the chair of the select board that this is still a priority for him and the select board.
Brian, is Heather Hannan able, I hope she can come.
I haven't, I know she's here on the call, but I don't believe I have heard.
Yeah, I accepted it.
Wonderful. Other updates, so at our last meeting, we were talking about having more of a robust conversation and for me to develop a memo about the master plan implementation committee. So that's gonna be a topic of conversation at our next meeting, December 15th. We've also received a withdrawal letter from Mr. Levitt for the special permit at 10 to 16 Mountain Vernon for FAR. We will be taking that up at our next meeting at 12:15 in order to vote on that request for withdrawal. I think those are all the updates I'm gonna talk about at the moment.
Can I get a couple of questions in there? Sounds like Heather has some thoughts too.
Oh, I was just, are you gonna go talk about what Brian has just brought up?
No, no, 88 Harvard Street, I know you were trying to reach Sean Lyons, any further effort?
Further effort, I I have not been able to reach him through email and he always did before. So I could call Brendan, his son.
Yeah, that would be great, let's try that.
Okay, I can certainly go a step further, I would imagine without a doubt, it's obviously not a priority for them.
And I would say that they may not fully, I mean, honestly, I wouldn't be surprised if they really didn't understand the significance, which is positive, of the vote at town meeting and how that could help them. It really does give them an opportunity to develop that is in their interest as well as ours. So I think that conversation might be the best way to go and you may, if you got a cellphone number, even better, but maybe try Brendan. And then one other, but when you reach him, I would explain a little bit, not just say, we want a few. Rather, there's an opportunity here, we'd like to explain. And then the other question, or not question, but just to amplify again, on the subdivision, we've really got two things. One is just the spreadsheet, which we know is easy, but we really, I think you're going to want to interact either with Nina or Art and try to figure out just what the plan is to try to reel these things all in. So I don't just think it's, I just, I don't want to have a chit chat, I want to really have a a well-understood idea of how to finish with these subdivisions that are so old. They sound okay?
Yeah, I'm not, so we had planned that meeting for sometime in January and we haven't calendered that yet because I have not heard from everyone, but yes, that is the plan for a meeting in January.
Right, thank you.
I was just going to remind members of the planning board that this Friday, the planning board along with Jennifer Goldson and her company is receiving the American Planning Association Massachusetts Chapter award for the Winchester Master Plan and it's a 2020 Comprehensive Planning Award. So kudos to everyone on the board and everyone who worked with the planning board and our consultants and our town planner and our town engineer and all the staff of Town Hall to help us move that plan into win this award, so congratulations everyone and that award will be given out this Friday at the APA's annual, I think it's holiday event, but this year, the annual awards, but this year it'll be done remotely. So congratulations to everyone and for members of the planning board, I do plan to attend, I don't know if any of you were planning to attend as well to hear or participate in any way, did anyone plan to attend? Brian, did you plan to attend?
Oh, definitely, I thought you were talking to the board.
Nope, they didn't answer, so I figured they're not, but I figured you, I was gonna ask you that next. All right, so it's you and me, Brian, I'm excited to see what the event is about. The other thing, I received an email from John Servier that the select board is taking on some things regarding zoning. Brian, I forwarded the email to you and was wondering if you knew anything about it because it sounds like they're trying to tap you to do some things regarding racism and zoning, do you know anything about that?
So, yes, there is a very large group that's starting off this process where they're interviewing each of us. So yes, I am aware of them.
Do you have like the proposal or anything regarding what the select board are doing or the scope or do you have any of those documents for the planning board to see?
Sure, I think, I guess I was under the impression this was more of a manager's office, but I guess that's not the case. Meaning the correspondence that I had had was mostly with, or only really with Lisa. So I can certainly forward that on for whatever information I do have.
Excuse me, I didn't hear, there was one thing that was sort of swallowed at the end, what is this?
It's a project, I was not necessarily know that it was related to zoning, but it was specifically, but that let me, it's quite, if you give me a second here, I can get it up, but it's about systemic racism. It's like an action plan and I think they're developing
Who's they, sorry, pronouns.
Sorry, the manager's office and the select board, but it sounds like John Servier has his hand up and may know more than me, is my guess. But that might be good while I can find this email if John wanted to elaborate.
John, yeah, so I'm referring to the email, just to update the planning board because the planning board wanted to have a community conversation with bringing in some experts to have discussions about racism and zoning and so we weren't aware of what some of the things you mentioned that are going on, so do you want to give us an update?
Well, the select board last summer, I believe, or if not last summer, early in the fall, created a committee on diversity and anti-racism. And one of the things that I periodically have done is to ask who's on that committee and what is that committee doing. It shows up on many, if not all, of the agenda as an item on the select board meeting agenda. The work that is, there's a phase one effort being undertaken by a by a consultant who lives in town and I don't have, Brian will find his name.
Jason Lee, it's the Anti-Racism Project.
And the phase one effort is to involve interviewing of town employees, town staff and it's broadened scope, so it would include public safety, land use, is there, one of the things that the consultant will do is to review relevant documents. And I asked specifically if is Brian Zakely part of the either the core team or the group that will be interviewed. And the response I got back was, yes, Brian is part of this effort. And so the scope references zoning in a couple of, at least I think in two places. And this is really getting at the the history of redlining and the vestiges that redlining has still resulted in and the realization during the summer that if you look at housing patterns and COVID impact patterns on, in, across the Boston area, they very much align with the former redlined districts. And so, you know, any discussion of housing and racism and whether it's something similar to the conversation that was held in Arlington or whether it's different. You know, clearly zoning is one element of that. And so Diab produced some ideas, which I think I forwarded to at least some of you. I produced a list of kind of alternative forms that this community conversation could take and talk to three or four people and it seemed to make sense to kind of in putting the pieces together. Phase one of this effort is supposed to be done by either, by during February, no, later than the end of February. And then a possible community conversation could follow in the, you know, as an April, May period, okay, I saw Brian's name there.
So when, so the phase one is they've gathered this supplemental documents, the only thing that I have done so far is you know, agreed to interview in terms of work performed by me or minutes put in. It's been zero until, and I am one of these interviewees as part of this group in terms of what I've done for this project.
Thank you, John, for, that was very informative and Brian for bringing that up. So I just wanted to bring that to the planning board's attention that this is going on, we were not, I wasn't aware of it. But I'm not exactly sure this is being managed, did you say out of the town manager's office, out of the direction of the select board? Brian, does it say who's managing the process?
I think it's joint.
I think this is a large project of Lisa's due to the select boards, I mean, it's like a circular thing there. I mean, I think it's a large part of Lisa's work because the select board wants it to be a large part of their own work and her work.
So if you wanted, so Brian, could you circulate around this document so the planning board can read it? And then if there's a way that the planning board would like to participate or we have goals that we would like to see out of this work, I think it would be important that we bring it up and maybe invite Lisa to one of our meetings to have that discussion if she's taking the management lead of the process. I don't know, so John, were you recommending that the planning board just kind of hold on this until?
No, I think phase two, which I don't, I've not seen a scope and this is a refined scope from what I have, which is one reason I didn't distribute my scope because I knew it was obsolete. Phase two is gonna involve a much more extensive outreach to community stakeholders. And so I would almost, this may be too simple, but I would characterize phase one and it's three months over the holiday period as getting started. And then phase two will be a more in-depth assessment and a broader range of people. Certainly, you know, making the interests known, I would think that the planning board would have a a fairly extensive role in phase two, or a much more extensive role in phase two than in phase one. And I think the phase one is limited largely to town staff and not to elected and appointed boards. Is that consistent with your understanding, Brian?
I'm just looking at this here, so the people that, it says, the group interviews will be elected and appointed officials such as, it looks like such as select board, school department, council on aging, manager's office, FinCom and climate action, but not the planning board. At least in this first step. And then the staff that's involved, you can see here that it's police, planning, clerk, council on aging, library, manager.
That seems like a remarkable omission.
A little bit.
I mean, I'm glad you're listed as being on the staff, but yeah.
Anyway, so I wanted to bring the planning board to your attention and we can, once you process everything, because I actually haven't seen this document either, so I don't have anything to add, except I just wanted to bring this to your attention that it's going on and that it, and then I don't know if based, once we figure it out, we'll reassess on how we want to proceed about doing some work with outreach about racism and zoning, so we'll take that up at another time, but that is that update as well. Brian, I don't know if you were intertwining by accident when I was talking about this or not about, there are some more opportunities for grants coming in for downtown businesses and so there is so Brian and Lisa are looking into seeing if, what makes sense and where Brian participates in those or not. But there are some more grant opportunities coming in regarding to the impact of the downtown area due to COVID and businesses and empty storefronts and various things like that. And it's less, the ones that I've seen so far last actually grant money, but more actually professional staff to help come up with a plan to support through these trying times. So that's the other update of some other things that are new that's coming into the planning departments. To-dos or feedback, right, Brian, I mean, that's pretty much, it's looking for feedback of areas we see are weaknesses. And so from there, we will move on to if there's any other updates that let me know. Otherwise, we'll move on to 3640 Elmwood Special Permit. So I don't know if legal counsel is with us right now.
They are, it doesn't look like they are, but I talked with Art today, so Julian should be on for the Abbey Road portion, but I mean, I do have the document that she submitted as well that was yeah, but she was supposed to be on, but anyway. Art advises that a modification to the special permit to be changed from 14 to 11 units. The parking ratio, the height, the envelope, all the affordable units, none of this is changing. The relief is extremely important, the relief is not changing. Meaning the setback in the FAR for this project. The affordable percentage is getting larger and the affordable unit is actually now a two-bedroom, two-bath. So he suggested in the future, the board can contemplate what would be considered a substantial change in future decisions. So when we, such as, you know, going lower, for example, there's always, there's a lot of court cases about someone building more than the required, more than the units approved. But because it's less, there's really, they basically said no court would make the applicant go in and change what was built in this case. Because they did not build more than what they were granted. So he specifically said no court would make the applicant go in and change what was built as they did not build more than what they were granted. So he advised us to, just to make everything kind of tight, is that advise the applicant and us to have for them to apply for a modification to the special permit, but no additional conditions could be put on it. It's just a modification going from 14 units to 11, that is what he advises, thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Go ahead, Di, I'll let you go first.
So this, you know, we, when we wrote up the conditions for this permit, we stated a lot of things about exterior detailing, balconies, things like that. Do we know that those have been followed through as required by the permit on the outside? It just, you know, it just leads to a bunch of questions as to what other parts of the permits were or weren't adhered to.
So we can go there, do you have other, do you want to?
The only other question I have is, I mean, you made the statement that their affordable percentage goes up, but that, that's kind of just it's a funny number because they didn't get, they didn't lower their number to the point where they had to remove a unit, correct?
No, but I think the idea is that if, or not that, I don't think, sorry, we talked, Art and I talked about this as well. Is that then we could make a case that this is a substantial change because the percentage is getting worse, quote.
Right, but I wouldn't put that in the positive category that their percentage affordable goes up because they're still only doing the bare minimum that's required by the number of units on the lot.
Understood it, we're talking about a potential exposure here for it's different, yes, I understand exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, it's just the way it looks, okay, anyway, back to the other conditions.
Brian, have you actually gone over it and looked at the building to see what's there?
So the, I have not gone there daily, but there's a lot of people from the building department and the engineering department that are making sure that everything is going according to plan, yes. But no, I, not, but I mean, they're looking at plans doing this, it's simply interior. Also, the applicant who's involved is here this evening. If you had any questions, I know, sure.
So one, I know it was really a pet peeve of mine, but I remember specifically asking about color and it's such a minor thing compared with the number of units, but I don't remember what was actually finally agreed to. I thought there was something from design review, I remember it going around.
It was a final, yeah, it was a final color. Well, I do remember the design review going out there and having a meeting and finalizing colors. Or whatever that means, I couldn't tell you, yeah, I couldn't tell you, but that's actually what got built, but I could tell you that. Right, so that's a DRC question, I'm gonna write that down.
Thanks.
Let's keep moving.
Yeah, I'll name, one of the members actually raised that at one of the meetings, when, you know, I'm a liaison. I thought, wow, good, because I was, other people have noticed too, what's happened over there.
So I'm gonna jump in real quick then, so my questions with regarding this actually has to do with the parking, you said there is no parking change. However, with the parking, with the units reducing, there's a maximum parking in the zoning that you can only have one and a half parking spots maximum per unit. Do we have the count of units in that plan? Because they didn't change the plan of the parking, but they changed the unit count. So are they out of compliance with the zoning with too many parking spots inside that building? So you don't need to answer that, Brian?
Yeah, I know the answer is they have 11 units.
Yep.
And they have 14 spaces. They were one-to-one, which was allowed by, so it has to be between .75 and 1.5 or else they need relief. In both cases, they are between that, they are in the buy rate parking ratio for both. It's, you know, it's 14 and 11, so, yeah, so yes, they're fine.
And so are those, are those deeded spaces to the units and does an affordable unit have one of those deeded spaces?
I would imagine they have to, that I believe Ian can answer, but they can't do that, they wouldn't be able to do that. But I hope that he can confirm that because that would not be
No, because they have to, they have to apply for a, right, for a change, so it just it'll come through that process, right?
No, no, they're just, they would just be, like Art said, they would just be modifying, so they don't, they don't trigger any other reviews. And the modification would only be going from 14 to 11 and that's all that, you're saying no additional conditions would be, it's only addressing that issue.
Except, and it's a review of the affordable housing to make sure it's because where the affordable housing originally was agreed to has been eliminated, that unit is gone. You're saying they're upsizing. The other interesting thing is the price points that they provided in that packet during the application of those units and where they actually are and going in the market because they now are, instead of being one bedroom, they're now two bedrooms. So I would like just to know that statistically because that actually gives us more information regarding the spread between the five and the 10 percentages and I'm interested in seeing that, those numbers, is there, is there a set of ASBILTS that we currently have with the town? Is my other question, if you don't know it, if you can get those as well, that would be great. And that would help also to see exactly how they changed those footprints of the, and how they dealt with the elimination of those units. But I'm just, I would like to make sure that the town has the ASBILTS since we don't.
Yeah, no, I mean.
But otherwise, so you'll follow through and give us the information as needed. You're after.
Can I, this is Beth, can I just jump in for a second?
Sure, Beth.
So I have a copy of the ASBILTS, but it's just a slight ASBILTS, they haven't provided an ASBILTS of the interior of the building. That's not typically something that we receive, so you'd have to request that from the applicant.
Okay.
But how does the occupancy permit get issued if somebody doesn't know what's going on inside, that's weird.
Well, it sounds like the building department knew what was going on, according to the email that Brian sent out today. It sounds like they, the ones who said it was not a, what is the word, important change?
Substantial change.
Substantial, substantial, yeah. Change has legal weight, that's a really important term, so we should all be using it.
Yes, substantial change, personally, it's a 20% change in the number of units. If I can divide three by 14, I get 21.4%, which in my mind is a fairly large thing. Now, I understand that we don't have any real rules which say this is what substantial change means. I'm a little surprised that a 20% change in the number of units, I gotta trust my calculator on that, doesn't rise to that level. It just, it just seems really strange that we catch this sort of a change way at the end of the process.
I'm also, I don't understand why there are not, oh, I guess there's probably plans of those, the layout that's changed, that's in Town Hall somewhere because
The building department has to
Those are not, those are not the ASBILTS, those are just revised plans.
Right, correct, correct.
Okay.
But I think, I wish Art were here, it seems to me that when you go It seems to me that when you go, basically it's shifting the price point of these units and that's not a small thing for a, a board that's been looking toward, uh, what, getting away from luxury housing and at least contemplating what other, you know, moving, putting units into the, uh, into the mix that are slightly more affordable.
Um, I think, um, we've all kind of, we, we have to continue this anyways. But I think we kind of have an update of what is actually going on and what the impact was to the main facets, and then from there we can proceed. And if you have questions, anyone from the board, you can ask Brian, um, you know, directly to him. Does that sound good for right now? Because we need to open up our, um, hearing.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. I think we had a process failure and we have to figure out how to fix it.
I think that.
So Art, Art told us how to fix it. He's, in the future, if this is something that, you know, if this is something that you would want to put in, you could just put it in, in the condition.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, it, what's that mean?
That if it goes, if the number of, if something like where the number of units, you consider that substantial. Meaning that in, he, he's saying that that, you know, that's not, if these, all these other things are not changing, he's saying the court wouldn't do that. So he, he's saying if you want to consider it.
Well.
Okay, I, I, that's fine. I, you know, I'm just reporting.
Yeah, I understand that that's the technical thing we need to do, Brian. But I think we have an overall process that we need to think about in terms of what we think, you know, we have to come up with what we consider to be substantial changes. And we have to create a con, a discussion or conversation with the building department, so they have an understanding. So that, because a lot of stuff is just done, um, informally, which makes a lot of sense. But in part, being part of that informal conversation is part of the process. So that's the part that I, you know, we need to, if the building department sees something and they say, well, this is, you know, maybe we should run this by the planning, the board, they signed off on the special permit to make sure they're okay with that. Creating that conversation, because we're not always going to be able to come up with every single thing we think is a substantial change. So there's, that's what I'm talking about in terms of the process. Anyway, I'm done.
Yeah, and I agree that changing the unit size, like the bedroom count is important to us to know.
All right, so more work to be had on that. I'll add it to our agenda for, um, another meeting. Um, it probably will not be until January, just so the board knows. Um, I didn't see legal counsel on here. I'm gonna move ahead to the hearing and then we can return back since we're on a schedule with the hearing. Does that sound good?
Works for me.
All right, so we're gonna jump a little bit around on the schedule this day. Um, it is, uh, eight oh five. Uh, we have a public hearing for nine Thompson, Thompson Street for a U special permit. Um, I am going to call, so this is an official hearing. Um, I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm welcoming to a public hearing of the Winchester Planning Board. Um, for all those who are part, uh, participating in this meeting via Zoom, um, you, um, your names are, that you sign in as, is being recognized as your sign in into the hearing. Um, the, I would like to remind everyone who has joined us since I started that the meeting is being recorded um, for the benefit of those who have just come for the hearing as well. As I noted, uh, this, the purpose of the public hearing is regarding a request for a U special permit for nine Thompson Street. Um, we are going to kind of move through this rather quickly. Um, so, uh, if you do speak, if you are called upon, I ask that you please speak um, and state your name, your company, and your address for the record, if it's applicable. Um, please direct your comments and questions to me as the chair, um, and um, once, uh, since we are doing this through Zoom, uh, I will ask you to unmute yourself and when you're done, please mute yourself, and that is you as if you're leaving the table and returning back to the audience. Um, I have the right to exclude irrelevant and, um, immaterial repetitive information, and I ask that everyone just be very respectful. Um, obviously with remote, it's a little, um, it is a little different than what most people are used to. Um, so, uh, I am actually going to turn it over, um, to Brian to introduce the applicant. Um, we are going to give the applicant fifteen minutes to present the project with an extension of up to ten minutes, um, may be allowed, given, um, that this is a use change. Um, I do not see a need for the extension of the ten minutes. But, um, Brian, if you want to introduce the applicant to the board and, um, let them present.
Um, sure, I was not sure if they had, uh, planned on, uh, presenting, um, but if you, um, wanted to introduce, mute yourself, Jennifer, that, um, that would, now would be a great time.
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Jennifer Brissette, um, owner of Stretch Med, hopefully to open on nine Thompson Street. Um, I wasn't planning on presenting, but I will speak a little bit to the concept so that everyone is aware of what um, we are here for. So Stretch Med is a one-on-one assisted stretch studio. So it falls in line with, um, chiropractic massage, physical therapy. Um, we have certified stretch therapists that use a combination of PNF, dynamic and static stretching techniques to improve people's health and wellness. So we will work to improve flexibility, blood flow, reduce stress. It is a boutique, open studio concept, so very visible from the streets, very, um, aesthetic. Um, it, it is appealing to the eye when, when walking by. Um, there are many benefits to one-on-one stretching, so this is sort of a new and up and coming concept. Um, again, it, um, improves energy, it reduces risk of falling. So our target basically is anyone from young athletes all the way through seniors. Um, it's people that have imbalances, deal with chronic pain, and just want to improve their everyday mobility. Um, the studio is, um, very minimal in change. So we are really just doing a, um, minor renovation to the space. Um, not doing anything structural to it, so it's, um, again, just an update to the space, making it very modern, keeping the high tin ceilings, um, and just hopefully introducing a health and wellness concept, um, to downtown Winchester. We are affiliated with Get in Shape for Women, so the parent company, um, is the same, so it is a branch off of that concept. So that's all I really have to tell you about the concept. Pretty simple and straightforward.
Thank you very much. Um, to my knowledge, um, Brian, we have not received any memos or letters at this time.
No, no, uh, we don't. Uh, this is a use change. Um, so we have not heard anything from any other board or committee or the, I, I did receive one phone call. Someone didn't understand, um, what the, what the use was, and I explained it to them, and they said, oh, that's a great idea, and then they hung up. Um, and that, that, that's all of the correspondence I've received from the public or otherwise.
Um, comments from town staff and other boards, engineering?
Beth, did you have any? We don't have any comments. No, we don't have any comments. It's an interior renovation. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is currently where A to Z Fine Arts was, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other board, um, boards present or town staff that wanted to provide any feedback to the planning board?
Heather, I've gone to both, um, DRC and historical, and neither one had this in front of them. So I think that, um, it, we would want to hear from them.
Well, if it's an internal redesign, um, I guess, in, DRC certainly has, we had something from DRC about the sign.
They're, they're correctly, they're currently reviewing the sign, and that was.
Yeah, there's something about making it smaller or something.
Even as you're saying, Brian has anticipated, we're not having our discussion yet, but what, what happens inside may affect outside, so that's what they do have. I think that DRC has a role here.
But they've already, they are reviewing something on it. Is it just the?
They've just reviewed the sign.
Okay, okay. And I wanted to know whether the Board of Health has anything to say? Does this have to be regulated since it's? I don't know. I'm just a question.
Uh, that, that would not be part of what, of, of what we would be doing, meaning that the, the, the Get in Shape for Women around the corner, whatever licenses that they would need to perform, they would, that, that's not at our office. I mean, that would, we wouldn't be reviewing that, so nothing would be reviewed by them at this time.
Okay.
Um, at this time, I'm going to open the hearing to public comment, um, and if you would like to speak, um, can you please raise your hand at this time? Seeing no hands raised, if there's anyone who's on a cell phone who would like to speak, um, or have public comment regarding this, can you please unmute yourself and identify yourself? All right. Seeing that there's no one interested in public comment, um, the board members, uh, can begin our initial discussion. Members of the board.
Oh, I, oh, I, I guess I need, well, I had to throw a, um, coin toss here. Um, who is about, somebody else was going to speak? It doesn't matter. Somebody else wants to go ahead of me, Maureen.
Oh, it was me.
Go ahead, Heather.
Uh, the first thing is I was wondering, like, I walked by there and they've already changed the use, really. I mean, the gallery is gone, so I was just wondering the timing of when people make these kinds of requests, because um, it seems like the signage is already there for what it's going to be, as if they've changed the use already.
I don't believe that the use is being, I, I don't, from what I understand, I think they go at their own risk, but the use is not triggered till, um, till it's actually being used as a functioning business, but I, 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 but I believe, um, for what, what you're talking about, I think at, at all times, applicants can, they, they can go at their, at their own risk with, with, with building work before having other permissions that is, that does happen. Um, but I don't believe the use is, um, being violated at the moment, because it's not being used as.
Did the sign comply with the recommendations of the Design Review Committee?
Oh, I just meant they have paper or something in the windows advertising.
Oh, that's different.
Right, it's still being, it's still being reviewed. They still had comments, um, for them.
Um, my main feedback had to do with a picture that I couldn't really understand in the packet, which made it look like the windows were screened and that the, yeah, and that there's also a physical screen. And so I think that that does really change the street experience, and that concerns me.
I'm going to add, that was what I, I have that page right in front of me right now, so Heather, I'm, I, I have the same concern. And I do note under the bullet point that says build and install eighty-two inch by eighty-four inch privacy wall out of one by eight inch oak with diagonal slats every six inches. So the effect would be like a, um, just, I see the applicant's wanting to speak, so maybe I'll stop. But I, I just think the general concern here is about the, um, I guess you'd say a permeability of the view into the space. And I realize we've already got one of those at the corner, and I wish we could take it back, but I don't want to see us going in that direction through the rest of the town center.
Right, so I just wanted to point out that changing the use, it, like, it's not just an interior renovation.
I'm sorry, you, it's not just what? I didn't hear you.
Well, when people say it's just an interior renovation, or then she said it's an open concept, like, the experience from the street is very different, and it will be different than how it was when it was in gallery. It will not be activated in the same way. They had things in the window.
I agree with everything you're saying.
Did the two of you have a question for the applicant?
Well, let's go with this. Is the screen that's in the bullet point, the build and install eighty-two by eighty-four inch privacy wall, is that the screen we're seeing in the, in the, um, I don't know what to call it, it's a sort of a, not a rendering, but sort of, it was sort of a rendering.
So that, so that, this is Jen, um, that is a rendering, and that is a rendering of another studio I used just to show the general concept. Um, there's absolutely nothing in the windows. There are no, there are no shades and there are no privacy screens whatsoever. So the windows you will be able to see clearly in. Um, that is a half wall. Um, it will only in our studio come over to probably the left side of the window. Um, and they are very wide slats, and it is very easy to see through them. So again, it's only on, when you're looking at the studio on the right side, that wall is set back. Um, there will be benches in front of that wall, that is the waiting area, and there will be, um, a bed behind that wall. But the windows have absolutely nothing in them. I don't know why those windows look like they have, um, a film on them. That will not be the case.
I think I'm going to say this, uh, Heather, Heather Von Miering, you're here, I want to go through you. May I speak further?
Yep, please go ahead.
It seems to me that we need some actual rendering of what's going on here and that it should go to Design Review. I'm not totally convinced of what I'm hearing, but I think it's a reasonable thing anyway for us to get a visual for a project like this.
Um, I, I just gonna chime in. I think that's a reasonable request. Um, the big concern actually is, um, more of the impact to the street, um, as you are hearing. So I think asking for the rendering and bringing it to Design Review to just double check. Um, and then that also helps us just form, um, if we do proceed with, uh, conditions that are linked to the use, if necessary, um, to maintain the life that is on that street and that, um, area. So I, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, as a follow-up, um, and it could be pretty, it doesn't have to be fancy. Um, we don't need an architect, excuse me, architect on this one, but the, um, I do think some kind of plan, so we know where that screen actually is, because I'm hearing that the window will be visible, but then half the left side and then the right side. I'm sorry, I was losing it. So, um, I'd like to see a plan, uh, that just shows where the screen is located, where that, where benches go or whatever. There was something else. I just heard a bed or something. Um, and then, uh, I, and then, uh, actually, I, I, I can't quite reconcile the rendering here with, uh, one by eight oak with diagonal slats every six inches. Is it the one inch? I, I, I just would really like to understand it better, so I just want to make sure it's as permeable as we're hearing. Um, so that's it.
So, um, does this board, I'm, I'm a little, um, perplexed at this process, um, the first time I've been part of one. But the comments of the board are concerning the interior design. Does this mean that if they were to change the design later, they'd have to come back before the board to make sure it meets our criteria?
I think it would be a condition of the approval. Um, remember, we're, this is a special permit, and we have certain goals, one of which is to create this active pedestrian, um, environment in the center. And once you start getting what are basically dead zones, um, you are having a significant impact on your other retail. A retail wants an active street, and when you've got a dead zone, it just discourages for the retail. So I think the answer is this would be the interior, I assume anyway, it's the nature of this sort of thing, that the interiors, once they're fitted out, they're pretty permanent, so I assume it's fixed. And if it were, there were to be, maybe the condition is broader, but that anything that affects the visibility from the front window would, um, have to come back to the board. That's what I would propose, but we'll have to work that out when we see what we've got.
And, and do we, I don't know the history of special permits in the CBD or in other places. Is this a, um, is this a requirement we put, or a condition that has been put on other properties? I want to make sure that what we're doing here is uniformly done to everyone. I don't want to, if this is what we want to do, then we have to make sure that it happens everywhere. And that's, that's really my concern here, is that, uh, we need to be uniformly conditional or whatever, you know. Um, so that's, that's where my questions are coming from.
Um, well, it hasn't, I, I don't know, Brian has, I'm mooring too, um, in terms of history. I don't think that there have been many uses that have come before the planning board regarding the Center Business District, if any, since the zoning has changed. If any, since the zoning has changed.
I can't remember a single one.
I would always anticipate, Diab, that the impact on the windows and, um, the openness and, um, welcoming atmosphere that they create is one of the things that we would always review. It currently, um, in the rendering, I mean, it's, it's actually one of a different one. It's not of the actual, um, space is what my understanding is, is from what the applicant said. I just think we should double check it and make sure that whatever we do, right now, that street is so alive and vibrant with the Fuller Cup and that we want to try to maintain that, um, while still, um, you know, a lot of the use.
I, I don't, I don't dispute the necessity of doing that. I just want to make sure that the process that we're engaging in is uniform. And that it's, it's something that the, the, um, people who are requesting special permits understand upfront that this is going to be something they will be, that will be part of the conditions. That's all.
So if you're looking at, um, our regulations, this is our regs, um, per section seven point three, um, there's three point four mix of land uses. And maybe Brian wants to bring it up. I have to say, this is not, um, the one, this is probably the one use that isn't really got, uh, addressed head on. But it certainly, I think it runs through, um, the, uh, three point four and the general principles be, behind three point four. So, um, Brian, were you prepared to bring this up as part of this hearing? Seven point three, the, um, regulations?
Maureen, while he brings it up, Cheryl said, her hand raised. Can I just ask her to speak while he brings it up? Can you hold your thought for a minute?
Yep.
Cheryl?
Sorry, getting unmuted. So I just had, um, I had a question about the, I'm happy Brian brought up the, the image of the, the front view. Um, the Fuller Cup has seating in the, in the windows. Um, and the, um, the applicant mentioned having seating, um, up in the front area as well. Is, 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 um, is there any intention to have, clothing and retail in the front window or seating in the front windows?
May I speak? This is Jen.
Yep, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to unmute myself to say if you want to ask that or if you want to wait to submit a plan.
I'm happy to answer that question and it's a hundred percent yes. So they'll be seating on both sides of the front windows. So the right window will have benches where our clients would wait. The left side will have a round table where our therapists will work at. So there's no front desk or anything like that. Again, it's a very open concept. We will also have a retail wall, um, selling athletic wear, um, on the left side. So all of that will be clearly visible from the windows. And again, just to repeat, that rendering was a different studio. These windows, I am aware of the importance of the visibility from the street. They will have zero film or, um, any type of shade in these windows. I want people to see in and see what's going on.
I have to say, all that sounds positive. I'll just get a little ahead of the crowd maybe. But, um, at the same time, we're going to want to lock it in and that does, so I still say, we still want to need that rendering and a little, uh, as I say, a pretty, um, uh, what, um, uh, schematic maybe, um, kind of a, or conceptual, uh, kind of a plan. Uh, so I do think that it's, they're still in order because those might be used as, um, part of our permit. Uh, so, um, those are my thoughts. I will say that, uh, you might think in some worlds, retail, why, or is that something we want to promote? And the answer is yes, we do. So I think anything that, uh, if between now and the next, when you come back, you might think about how to further what you're doing, uh, so that the, uh, the interesting part certainly would be the retail component of your business. I mean visually from the street, so that's something else. I do think, uh, we see this unfortunately with our real estate, um, uh, um, businesses in town. The windows can look pretty dead and the more you can do to enliven the windows, uh, happier I think we'd be and the better it is for the street. Um, but anyway, um, if, just to, I'm really more addressing Diab right now. That, that section three point four is where I think, uh, this conversation has, um, is addressed best.
Okay, any, any luck in getting that up, Brian? Unfortunately, I don't have my bylaws handy at the moment. You know, if, while.
So, sorry, I, I, were you, I, I've been, you said seven point three point four, that just didn't make.
No, no, no. It's the regulations for the CBD.
Okay, that, that's why I didn't, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I was, um, I'm not there yet. I was going through the zoning bylaw. I thought that's what was asked, so, sorry. Not your fault, yeah.
Um, Heather, can I ask a question of the applicant real quick?
Yes, you may.
Um, so I was wondering about your, the, um, the clients who actually aren't really enthused about having their manipulations being done in public. Will there be an area in the back that will be private?
Currently, there is not. It is an open studio concept and we haven't felt the need. Although the studio is large enough to do that, if in fact, we have enough clients asking for, um, a private stretch.
Okay.
I would, this is Cheryl again. Um, I was wondering if the board was, um, active in, um, reviewing the exercise space. What's it called? It's around the corner from there that is, um, has all the film on the windows.
Well, we know what you're talking about. I know. I look at it all the time and think this is not good for the center.
Yeah, it sounds like this, if we can understand wh- what exactly the, you know, the special permit here is, is about, which I'm with Diab. I don't quite understand, um, what we're reviewing. Um, except, you know, urban environment, obviously planning for an urban, um, condition, but, um.
When things exist, historically, they're, you know this Cheryl, they're grandfathered and it was grandfathered. But now we've got a special permit in front of us and it's for a change of use. And we can, um, uh, put, uh, put conditions on that, uh, use, uh, to the extent that it's relevant to our, um, regulations or our zoning. So it's a matter of what's before us, not where, where things landed. Um, whether it's twenty-five years ago or five years ago.
And the business owner will be held to what's in the permit and the application currently.
Yes.
Thank you.
So Maureen, is this the language you were, you were, um?
Yeah, so.
It's, it's really quite vague.
Well, it, what, I don't think it's that vague. It's just that it's retail and then it's housing. And then if you go down, it is office. So you've got to plug everything that goes in here into the one of three uses. So it's kind of.
And look, yeah, but if we're looking at A, which is retail, it says it'll focus on and enliven existing streets. I, I personally understand the need to have a storefront which enlivens it. I am really concerned about us intruding into the store too far to say that we can control what's going on some depth into the store. Um, and that's where my, my concern is. I don't have a, this is not a, it's not a hard line for me. It's just a concern that these are qualitative decisions, which I realize have to be made on a, you know, case by case basis. But because they're qualitative, it, there's a chance that they will not be uniformly applied. And that's, that's really my whole concern here, is to make sure that everyone is treated fairly. And I realize this is the first, apparently, and it's hard to determine, to tell what will happen in the future. So that's the only, that's the only place my concern is coming from.
So what if an existing retail place put up a screen like what we were, what we read in their description?
Well, the way I understand that screen, when you were standing directly in front of it, you will have perfect visibility into the room. It's only when you're at an angle to the screen that it would prevent you from seeing into it. If it's set back far enough, then, so that's, that's where, you know, so enlivening the street is what you see within the first six or eight feet into the, into the store. If I look at a lot of these things, you can't see back that far into them. And so it's only really what's right at the street, which I think draws you in. Um, there are a number of stores in other communities where, you know, they've got so much in there that you really can't see beyond eight or ten feet because they're just stuff. So, um, that screen doesn't bother me. I think it's open enough. It, and, and it's set back for, if it were set back far enough from the windows, that it's not part of that enlivening space.
Yeah, I wasn't really asking to debate this screen. I was just speaking to your fairness question about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
About it is because it's a change of use, whereas if an existing retailer wanted to, to do that, we wouldn't have any say.
Yeah, that's where I'm coming in, um.
Well, usually when you have a retail, the reason you wouldn't be concerned about that is because you want to bring people into
Yeah.
retail space. And to do that, you wouldn't block the windows to not show what you're, what you're selling. You want to show what you have so that they move into the space. I, I feel that what, um, the applicant has said is, is what I'm looking for, to try. It's really the view and the perspective from the street looking at it to make sure it's not a block of unwelcoming environment. And, um, it sounds like that their goal is not to have that, um, is, their goal is to have a welcoming environment. Let me rephrase that. So, uh, I just, whether we, um, ask the applicant to come back with, um, whatever that perspective is from the street looking in, um, taking out a reflection of the sun, um, would be great. Um, and that, that is enough for me. If you want to bring it back to Design Review, they have to just review the sign anyways, which might impact how they do, um, that seating area and to make it all together or whatever the applicant chooses. I think it's fine at this point if we, if someone is willing to say, you know, um, have them go with the perspective of what the view will look like from the street with the use and how they're going to keep the liveliness of the retail still in place with the new use and come back, um, with, after you see Design Review. So we do a continuation until that and then continue and move on down the line of, um, deliberating. Is that, does that sound okay with everyone?
Heather, yes. Um, by the way, I just want to make sure before I, uh, lose it, that, um, this is actually, oh man. It's page nineteen, Brian. It, um, everybody should see it. It's elements of form. Um, it's three point five elements of form and it follows a long E, section dot E. I, I just want everybody to see this because it's transparency of ground floor spaces. I was just flipping through this right now. So keep going past C, D, and then E. There we go. And you're getting close. It's transparency. Keep going down. Down, down. Unless you call it up, but yep. Um, whoop, eighteen, page nineteen. There we go. And this is actually key and this is probably the one to hang our hats on. It's all new buildings should maximize visibility and transparency through ground floor, retail, restaurant, lobbies or possible future public view space. So it's just this general idea of transparency, um, which is desirable as you see. So I think that, um, the most important part of this and we should all be, uh, always using our regulations when we're working with CBD. So anyway, um, Heather Von Miering, thank you very much. I thought you were, uh, everything you summarized sounded good.
Do we want to have a, um, uh, Brian, uh, if we want to continue, um, we have to set a date in January?
Yeah, we're still, we're still working in our January dates unless we figure out our first meeting in January.
Right now. Um, but when is Design Review meeting next?
I don't know that off the top.
Ooh, I, am I unmuted? Yeah, I actually have it. Uh, they planned, um, meeting for January sixth.
So do we want to look at having our first meeting in January on January twelfth?
I'm available.
Diab?
I'm looking at my calendar, trying to find January.
Cheryl?
Yes, I'm okay.
Yeah, it's okay.
Heather Hannan?
Um, I'm not sure. My annual event starts that next morning.
Okay, so do you want us to just schedule it for now or would you like us to look at a different date?
No, you can just schedule it.
Okay, and then back to the applicant before we do this. So the goal would be that you do your, a rendering, bring it to Design Review on the sixth and then come back to us on the twelfth? Is that okay with you and schedule wise or do you need more time?
Um, we wouldn't need more time. Does that mean nothing can move forward until then? So we're delayed in our opening if we were ready? So all you're looking for is just a rendering of the front to prove the visibility from the street?
Well, I, I did say, I think some very rudimentary plan, just so we know what's where. But keep in mind, this isn't just for our trusting that you're going to do what you're doing. And maybe I should address it to Heather Von Miering. Um, it's not for us to just be trusting. It's also, this will be attached to our permit. I think that's really important, um, to keep in mind.
Yeah, so, so to elaborate, I think we need some sort of a, a floor plan to show exactly where the screen is relative. So, you know, just a, a floor plan in addition to the rendering.
Um, and what if instead we?
Is it, the Design Review Committee, I, I received the sign approval and staging permit already from both. Just, I, I, I heard someone say that the sign was still under review, but I have received the letter that the sign was approved and the staging permit as well.
Oh, I didn't, nobody said that it was still under review. Um, I asked the question and I really, we should go, I should go through Heather Von Miering. Um, it's a matter of whether the recommendations for their, the changes, because they did have a few, uh, requests. Uh, how, what we're, what we're actually getting if that worked, if what was submitted.
I have a question too, uh, no, because we have to tie it to the, we have to try, tie it to the permit. Because we can't do a condition of the permit that it gets reviewed and those, whatever the Design Review asked for gets tied to it. We have to wait for Design Review. The only way we could expedite it is to see if Design Review would meet sooner and that is the.
Christmas, I don't know.
No, but what we, I mean, we are meeting next week. We could just continue it to next week and see if, um, that they would, might be willing to meet on the fourteenth quickly to review this. It's something we could, we could try. I'm happy to do it, given everything going on right now. I'm fine saying, recontinuing to the fifteenth and seeing if we can get Design Review to meet quickly on the fourteenth to review it. Um, and then if they can't, then we'll just have to move it to when, after the Design Review meets, um, in, in, in January.
Well, I personally don't feel the need for Design Review to look at this. I appreciate their input, but I think it's a pretty simple design. So I don't know that, I, I am also cognizant that the applicant seems to be ready, want to open soon. And I don't know that we will get that much more information. So I don't, I don't see the need to go to Design Review for the interior. As long as the applicant, what, uh, what she says is, seems, i- is what's going to happen. Of course, we do need guarantees on that, but it seems like it's okay, it's okay by me.
I feel Heather. I could pull up a, sorry, this is Jen. I could pull up, um, a floor plan that was done if you wanted me to share a screen so that you could see an overhead of the front part of the studio and how it's going to be laid out. I don't know if that would be helpful at this time.
Um, give me one minute. Let me, Cheryl, was that you who wanted to speak?
Okay. No, I was just, I just wanted to voice my agreement with Diab.
Yeah, I agree too.
I, as a board, I think we can write the conditions in a way that we will get what we are looking for without waiting for it to come. Uh, because it can't be changed architecturally to it. It really has to deal with that there's no film or shade, that you can see into the space, that there is seating in the, you know, um, like, we may not even need to do, but that there's, um, the, you know, whatever we choose to do, I think we could do it in a conditions. Um, and if there is any changes, the architectural would come back anyways. So it's really just the use and to make sure that the, the space in front stays open and transparent.
I, I agree. Um, I think in the future, um, I would. I, I agree. Um, I think in the future, um, I want to point out to Brian, these really should be going to the advisory board. So assume that, I mean, I, it just shows how we're not quite all understanding what's, what we should be, we've got a process here and we should be using it. So, um, but I think we all feel pretty comfortable, uh, and plus we need it, we did, we do want the, um, if this idea of transparency is important, and I believe it is, we've all commented on it. Uh, we really do need to know what's going on in the first few feet at least behind these windows. Um, so, uh, if there's a plan already, but I still think we should get a chance to look at it. I, I just don't want stuff that's new thrown up at us, um, right now on the screen.
I mean, the only thing I can say is that the recommendation that I had was, was for transparent windows and no frosting of any kind. And, and I, I think beyond that, um, you know, I guess I'm, we obviously don't always agree here. But I, I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't understand, I guess, the rigor of the interior related to this use. Meaning that if we went back to the street view where we were looking at, obviously there was art in the window. And that's some, that's obviously engaging people on the street. But, I mean, I, I don't, I, I couldn't say that, that this use is, is detrimental and that would somehow prevent a, a, anything from happening. I think that within this next week, anything that we could ask of the applicant, they could bring to us next week and we should be able to come to some agreement.
I'm ready to come to agreement this evening, to be honest.
Even bet, even better, even better.
No. We want the documents to go attached to the permit. We can't just, I, I don't think it's responsible given the importance of transparency of the, um, to just let it go. This has to at least ride with the permit.
Well, I think that I would have a, a written description of what's going to go there. In my mind would suffice. I don't think that there shouldn't be guarantees. Um, but I think we can come up with a written description of the use and position of that screen, which would allow us to complete the business this evening.
I can't do anything unless someone wants to make a motion. Do either continue to, to.
Well, I'm, I'm, would like to hear what the other members of the board think.
I wanted to see the floor plan because I'd like us to move on.
So Heather, you do want to see the four, floor plan?
Yeah. I think if they have something, we don't need to wait to look at it. Doesn't mean we have to.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. The one that, okay. Did other members of the board want, would like to see the floor plan that she offered?
Yes, please.
All right. Can you please, um, send the floor plan to Brian so he can share it on the screen?
Sure.
Thank you.
Even better. I just made you a co-host. You can just start my share and you can go right ahead.
Okay.
Just know that anything that's on your computer on your background will be visible to the public, just so you want to close everything down if you have anything.
Yep. Let me open up. Ryan, I'm going to email it over to you. For some reason it's not letting me share. So if you give me one second, I will email it over.
Bigger issue then is then we also need to create conditions and it's, we have a very, as Heather said at the beginning of the meeting, packed agenda. I think this would go a lot more quickly for one more week if we could get this, um, if you just move on and get the, um, get some sort of draft of the conditions. And, I mean, it's a special permit. Get the draft of the plan, get the draft of the conditions.
So Maureen, you're, you're not saying go back to, um, designer. You're just saying just do the drawings and bring them back to us next Tuesday?
Correct. And draft conditions. Brian can draft them, which is what we often do before we vote on something.
I'm fine with that if, if the board is fine with that.
Um, how behind are we, Heather?
Um, we are ten minutes behind and one item behind.
Let's put it this way. We've got a lot. We've got Abbey Road. We've got a Gin Road petition. We've got a budget, which is hugely important for our FY twenty-two, and we've got Lauren Court. We've got a big agenda ahead and I think guys, I can't make it past ten.
Okay, I have, I have it now. I don't know. I'm obviously not driving here, but I do have the PDF if, if anyone wants it.
Can you show it please?
So where's the retail piece?
Down the bottom.
Right next to the table.
Yeah, I know it's labeled.
Right, street, streets on the right, or. Thompson's, Thompson is here.
So I'm gonna, I, I just, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this special permit with attaching this layout with the condition that no substantial changes are made to the front part, the front twelve feet of the store, which includes that primary wall or the privacy wall. And the condition that the windows do not have any shades or coverings, which, I mean, I don't know how far to go on that because obviously the gallery had pictures in the window, which blocked her view into the gallery. So, but, um, that's what I would say is all that's needed for this to complete, to continue.
I'll second that.
A motion on the table, discussion? Do you have, I'd like to add the word film on there?
Sure.
Shades, films, or coverings. And the front twelve feet of the property or the, I'm not sure if the property is the right word, of the parcel, um, remain fully transparent to the public way. To the way, I think, right?
Yeah, to, to the public way. Yeah. And, and in there say that this includes the, the privacy wall, just to make sure.
You don't, I, I think this is clean enough. You're, it's talking about the site plan specifically.
Right, right. In the submitted site plan, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's not a site plan. It's an interior plan.
Okay, uh, call it an interior. That's correct. Thank you.
And I just wanted to make sure that the applicant, um, as that plan was pulled out, that, that is, you're comfortable with maintaining that first twelve feet as drawn, given that you may swap the table to the right, to the left, but that's.
Yes, I am comfortable with that.
Oh, there's another thing that that so-called privacy wall, um, man, we're going to need something written about it. Cause I don't, I, I don't want it. All of a sudden it's going to get draped. It's going to get, you know, I don't know. It, it could get covered and all.
Well, it, it has to maintain transparency. So we can't have drapes if it's to maintain transparency.
It's also twelve feet back. It has to.
Yeah, I don't, I kind of feel like being twelve feet back. I mean, you could have, you could have retail furniture that is covered with clothes twelve feet back and you wouldn't be able to see past it. I think, I think it's described in the application. As being, you know, its construction is transparent based on its, based on its description.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Actually before, uh, do you have, we changed the motion? Did you want to re? Or do you want to go with your original motion?
I will go with this motion.
So you're going to withdraw and resubmit?
I will withdraw and resubmit and only ask you capitalize the letter J in my name.
Heather Hannan, did you want to steal second?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Hannan, I.
Curious, I.
Um, Meister, I.
Wolf, I.
Von Miering, I. Motion passes five oh. Um, nine Thompson Street is getting a used special permit. Thank you very much, uh, Jennifer, for working with us and, um, we look forward to seeing your new business on Thompson Street. Uh, moving forward on our agenda, um, we have ZBA petition number three nine two zero twelve Gin Road. However, is town council currently with us? I'm not seeing.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not seeing them. I, so I, I did get the, the vote that, um, this is based upon, um, negotiations of, of, of art and, um, and their legal counsel to, um, well, I mean, you, you, so, um, I was going to put it up on the screen, but.
Let's go, Brian, let's keep going and I will email to see if they're actually even coming or not. And if they're not, then we'll bring it back into the agenda. But let's keep going to the ZBA petition number three nine two zero twelve Gin Road.
Uh, okay.
I'll email them while you pull that up.
Sure. Uh, Jillian, I believe it was Jillian who was supposed to be coming.
Hang on. Everything's going around so fast. It's Maureen. I'm not going to participate in the twelve Gin Road. I'm, uh, in a butter.
Thank you, Maureen. So Maureen is recusing herself from twelve Gin Road. All right, Brian, kick it off. And I, as you do that, I will, since you're doing the tech stuff, I'll do the email real quick.
I have a question though. When I saw on the map that Maureen was in a butter, I mean, can't, can't she speak as a resident and as in a butter?
Uh, she can. Uh, usually the planning board tends not to speak. When we recuse ourselves, we just remove ourselves altogether. And the only reason for that, um, it does, it's not mandated in any way. It's just because it just removes all concerns of any form of conflict being brought up.
But we're allowed to, you're saying? Cause I was wondering that with, um, what is it? Lauren Court also?
It's borderline. It's basically borderline. I'll, I'll say, I mean, is that, is that the safest thing to do with what our, our, our council would say by far? This, it would, which makes sense because this is what they try to keep everyone out of trouble. But the safest thing is to just recuse yourself and not be, and not speak. Because even speaking as a, a, a resident, you could still have sway, even though you're on the other side of the table, so to speak. Oh, right. It's my turn. Sorry. Um, twelve Gin Road. Um, or is it Gin? I now I'm just second guessing myself. I thought it was Gin. Nobody?
Maureen's the one who's lived here the longest and she can tell us, but she can't speak.
Right. Okay. So, uh, petitioner is speaking, is seeking a ZBA special permit, um, to be constructed in addition that will be located closer to the rear property line and permitted as of right. Um, the property is located, um, in RDB zoning district and, um, contains, uh, sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty-two square feet. The historical commission met on this, um, and found no adverse impact on a resource and recommended favorable action. The house was not considered a historic resource. And at the time this memo, I did not have the, the design review comments, but if Maureen, I guess she could speak as a representative because I believe she was at the design review meeting. So, um, basic, uh, basically what's happening is it's the destruction of a rear deck and the construction of a new patio and the screened in porch, um, on the footprint of this existing deck. So due to the rear location and, uh, small scale, uh, the proposed screened in porch, I saw no adverse impact on the neighborhood or, uh, in a butter and read it, recommended favorable action with regards to this, um, petition. Um, thank you.
Non-engineering, Beth?
Um, I haven't had a chance to review the ZBA petitions yet for the December seventeenth meeting. But the same general principles as always apply that if they're increasing the impervious area, they need to provide, uh, stormwater mitigation.
Thank you. Members of the board?
Um, typically I, I'm not real happy when people move into the, um, setback. Um, I did note that the neighboring house is further away from the fence. Um, but it is, you know, the, there's a, actually, Brian, do you have the electronic plans or can you show them?
Yeah, I'll get them up in just a second. What do you, what plans are you looking for?
Uh, just the one showing the layout of the new, in the back. Um, I forget what it's called. Maybe the, uh. Uh, it's just, there's a, there's a triangle which cuts across the back of that existing deck, which would maintain this, the current distance to the fence and I think would allow them to retain, um, their current setback. It would change the design. Of course, so.
So, what you, this, okay, um, this is the proposed plot plan. Are you, you're looking for a rendering or are you looking for the?
Well, the plot plan.
Okay, it, um, you're, it should be up in, on, in front of the screen. You're not seeing a PDF now?
I'm just seeing your, uh, your file browser.
Interesting. Okay. That's probably why I'm wondering what's going on because, now, all right, we'll try again and there we go.
Yeah, okay. If you could zoom in. So they, they need a fifteen foot setback. And if they, they, if they, I, I understand it would be an awkward sort of look to it, but they could get a fifteen foot setback if they took a triangle off the back of the proposed screen porch, or if they moved the porch a little further down. And I realize that's perhaps design wise, not great, but it would make me feel better about this proposal. Because there's a big difference between a screen porch and a deck in terms of its impact on the setback. That's my only concern.
They could have made it narrower too, actually, looking at it. At the plan of it, they made it a twelve foot eight screen porch. But they could have brought it in tighter and made it a smaller porch to fit it in there.
Yeah, I mean, they, they're just, they're using the same footprint as the old one, or so somehow they managed to gain point one feet of space. Um, so yeah, they could have pulled it in a bit. I, I don't know. I mean, that's, it is really tight to that, to that fence. And there's a tree there as well. The whole thing looks a little tight back there. But my main concern is again, getting into the setback.
Brian, do you have an aerial of this? Uh, any other comments from members of the board?
Um, I was just wondering how far on the other side the next building is, like where someone would be viewing it from. Like, I didn't look at this view, being pulled up now, but that would be helpful.
Yeah, they had a, they had a Google map with very faint outlines showing the location of the house. And, uh, I wish I could give you a measurement, but I can't. That's crazy, man.
Google Maps just took us through the trees.
Yeah.
This is, this is not Google Maps. The, uh, it's Google Earth. Um, it uses like Google Maps. The, uh, it's Google Earth, um, it uses like, Google Maps uses view the technologies, and Google Earth has, uh, a lot more with the bird's eye perspective.
So which property? Yeah, I'm totally lost now, there it is, there's the little thing.
So you can't get the angle because of the trees, so I can't really get the angle that you really wanna see.
Oh, it's that house that's up from Maureen's, is the other one, right? Straight up. The other brick, yeah.
Is it at the fence though, at the back of the house right there? I see it.
Yeah, I just meant like the house that's straight above it there on the map.
And there's the, the, their picture shows a, a, a nice little tree next to the fence there, which I don't know, it doesn't seem to be in the Google Earth photo or shot. So, uh, the tree would definitely have to be trimmed or something in order to put their thing in.
There's also, this is also not a historical house, this house was built maybe ten years ago? Maybe a little less?
Uh huh. Wow, it was built and they? Okay.
It's new construction.
It is, definitely.
Uh, this is a, and I, this is a tricky one, just cause it just, it's not really, uh, um, alright, members of the board, um, does anyone wanna make a motion or? Or talk, or have any questions? Do we wanna just move forward and not make any recommendations? Is that what we're doing?
Uh, I'm so torn on this one.
I'm kind of neutral right now. I would like to make sure that they do, um, if it does get approved, that, um, that engineering and the runoff gets dealt with. But I, it's also, there's not enough information actually in some ways, because you're missing on the assessor's map, the, all the butters are actually cut off on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm on the fence.
And, uh, then what we've done in the past, uh, just to move things forward is, is, if you can, uh, I'm not, I'm guessing or I'm hoping you're looking at my OneNote screen right now, and we just kind of list some concerns, um, just rather than nothing.
I think that's fine, and we just list concerns and provide it to them and don't make a recommendation.
We've done that in the past, yes.
Where it's, the concerns are the runoff, the concerns are the location of it in relationship to the butters is unclear. Um, the, it's also unclear on why the need, is it why there is a need to go inside that setback for a structure?
Yeah, I would say that, you know, yeah.
I, you know, I think the fact that there's already a deck there, there's obviously program inside the house that relates to that location. Um, and so it's, you know, I can see how, if this were an enclosed addition, not a screened-in porch, it, you know, it would be something that's potentially lit all the time or used, um, in more seasons, um, but as a screened-in porch, it's, you know, it's a, um, it's a summer or, you know, good weather type of, um, room. So it's probably not that different than, than being a deck, but I do agree with you that, yeah, that it, having a roof on it does, um, does change, uh, just, that's, it's changed in some way, but.
Well, my concern as well is that it, the first step is a screened-in porch. And then it's converted into a three-season thing. Because it's just what seems to happen when you, when you add a, a permanent structure to a building over the years, it takes on new roles. And so, um.
Yeah, but it's, it's not gonna have a, um, a foundation under it, so it's gonna be a really cold space and very difficult to, to, um, keep temperature in.
Well, I, I, I spent grad school in a bedroom which had a, no foundation under it, and it was cold, but it was my bedroom. Um, I, um, I did not notice that they weren't gonna put a foundation under it. So, uh, well, they've got, yeah.
I saw the bulkhead next to it, but I don't see a, um, a footprint.
They're doing something to level the ground, because there is a slope at that. I'm looking at back elevation A two. And they've got something in there which is running underneath it. Maybe.
They have footings?
I don't know, it, it looks continuous, but you're right, they don't actually show, as far as I can tell. They don't show what they're doing underneath there.
The, the, the drawings are just missing detail, um, by the way, also, I just wanted to clarify that it actually, it was built in two thousand and twelve, the applicant says it's nineteen fifty-six. This was actually a house where they demolished it down but kept the one chimney to, to try to before the, uh, preservation bylaw was adjusted to skirt around the demo delay. So that is why the date in the assessors are saying it's nineteen fifty-six, but it's actually two thousand and twelve.
Day.
Is that the construction?
Yeah, I'm on Google Maps and it's basically, um, sticks. It's showing, um, it's showing the house being framed, so. It's not.
This is amazing technology. It goes back to fifty-six.
Yeah, but anyway, that's, I just wanna clarify, cause I know, everyone be like, no, it says it's nineteen fifty-six in the assessors, it's actually, that's why it would actually happen. And so it still has the original date of the original house, but the only thing that remains is the chimney, and I don't even think the chimney still remain.
Yeah, there you go.
It's in the picture.
Isn't that funny?
Oh, that's funny, you don't see it in the, on the screen, but they put a chimney in. Cause it's in, it's in the, the documents, so that's hilarious.
Anyway, um, with that, um, I think, are we good with the comments?
Yeah, can we see those comments again, please, Brian? Yeah, I would rephrase three as, I, I would phrase it as, um, the, the porch doesn't seem to need to extend into the setback. Could they redesign it?
I don't know though, Diab, it looked like the room is only twelve feet deep. So if you take five feet out of it, you're, you're basically, you've got a wide corridor.
Oh. Yeah, well, maybe they could use that, maybe they could move it to the, further down.
There's, there's not enough information, there really is not enough information, they don't have the plans of the house, they don't have the section to show if it's a foundation. There's, there's just not enough information to take a position, I think we should just move on.
Yeah, maybe we should, uh.
Assumptions at this point, and that doesn't help anyone.
Yeah, so, so, I agree with you Cheryl, maybe, Brian, can you re-edit number three and put it back the way it was? And just say, does this, doesn't seem to need to go on the setback or something like that, are we okay with that phrase? I'd like the word setback in there, how's that, that would make me feel good.
And it's like, what is the need, is really what it is, what is the need of the, to go into the setback?
Yeah.
Did we need to vote on this, is there a requirement, or can we just? I guess if you're gonna speak on the board's behalf, we actually do need to vote on it. So it gives you, so you can write your, the letter.
It would just be a vote of these concerns.
Yep.
I, I move that we send these concerns to the ZBA.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Hannah, discussion? Roll call vote please.
Hannah, I.
Juris, I.
Wolf, I.
Bun Mary, I, motion passes four oh with Meister abstain. Or recused. Uh, moving on to our budget, um, actually, Legal might be joining us right now.
Yeah, there, this was my mistake, and Beth alerted me to this, that the agenda that I had given Jillian, uh, I gave it to her early and I told her to come at nine twenty, so she wasn't planning on coming until nine twenty. Uh, so that was my bad, um, but she is here.
Alright, so let's, uh, go through Abbey Road quickly.
Um, okay, so, um, Jillian, if you're there, if you wanted to kind of talk very briefly, uh, about the, some conversations, I guess, either, I guess you and Art have had with, um, the applicant and his attorney. Um, and in terms of just kind of an update of where we are at this, at the moment, um, and the, um, we had asked Jillian to prepare the votes that were necessary in order to release this security, um, um, and I guess I'll, I'll turn it over to her.
Jillian, can you unmute yourself and join us, please?
I've asked her to unmute. Um, it's possible she could be having a connection issue.
Alright, Brian, you've reviewed these and you're comfortable with them?
So we, yeah, they've been going back, uh, back and forth, um, for a bit, but, um, most of, uh, about many other things, to be honest, but this is, this is related to things that kind of have already been, um, done, so this first vote is to basically memorialize something for the bank that has already happened. So this has, this has already happened, the board already voted this, this just needs to happen in order for the, um, that the bank have their records, so that's one. The other is that, um, uh, to issue the partial release for four and five of the subset, subdivisions substantially in the form of the partial release for lots one to three of the subdivision recorded with the registry, so that's, um, I, I'm gonna have to ask Jillian, this was the one question that I had had, um, for her. And then this third one is to authorize the chair of the board to execute this certificate of completion, um, to, um, basically memorializing this here. So, um, again, this is mostly things that have already happened, and I was hoping, uh, that Jillian could shed a little light on this second portion that I did not understand.
Hi, Brian, yep, I'm here, sorry.
Um, Jillian, just one second, Maureen, Meister, are you back with us? Can someone please call Maureen and invite her back in with us?
I'm back.
Oh, thank you. Alright, I just wanna make sure she was back with us, alright, the full board is back, thank you Jillian, take it away.
Sure, sorry everyone, um, so I think the only question is just about the partial release, that, uh, second portion of the vote. Um, so.
Correct, correct, yeah, that was the only question that I had, but I don't know if the board had other questions, but that was the only one.
Sure, so I'll speak to that first, so, um, that, the partial release, so, um, back, uh, when the agreement was initially signed, we issued a partial release for lots one through three. Um, and then the nature of the deal was that once I, the balance of the escrow sum was funded, um, because the escrow sum was so large, we agreed that we would allow it to be funded in two pieces once when the first three lots were sold, and then after that, um, presumably upon the sale of lots four and five, the rest would get sold from those sale proceeds. Um, but what's actually happened is that, uh, the developers completed enough of the work that the escrow sum has been reduced below the threshold where no additional money needs to be added to the escrow sum, this escrow sum is whole as it currently stands. Um, which is why we're able to issue the partial releases for those last two lots now without adding anything else to the escrow sum.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, uh, and just, Beth is all set, town engineering is all set?
Um, yes, definitely.
Yeah, that, this, it's just, sorry, that's okay, um, not really anything engineering related, more legal, um, specific, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question, so Jillian, this is Diab, I just wanna, so the only thing that second thing has to do is with the escrow, nothing else?
Correct, well, it's, I, the second one, essentially, it's more of a cleanup change than anything else, because the escrow sum has been made whole. Um, now that triggers the board's release of the lots. The only reason that we were holding them was in contemplation of the escrow sum becoming whole. So by, now that it's been reduced past the threshold, um, they should be released.
And, and why do we need to ratify our previous vote for number one?
Sure, fair question, so when the vote was initially taken, the board should have issued the partial certificate of completion that corresponded to the work that was being released. Um, so the escrow agent, in order to actually release the money from escrow, just needs to strictly comply with the terms of the agreement. And because we, I voted to reduce the sum but didn't formally issue the certificate of completion, the escrow agent is caught in a bit of a limbo, and so they've asked us to, uh, tie that process up, um, and issue the certificate of completion so that they're able to reduce their, uh, disperse those funds.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board? Is there a motion?
Uh, I will move that, um, we do everything that's on the screen, I don't know how we're gonna phrase this, to, uh, issue is, yeah. What, uh, what do we call this, to issue is, to just vote this way? I am, I'm really failing.
I would say, I would say to issue, I would say to, to issue the certificate of vote of the Winchester Planning Board on December eighth.
Okay, then, then so be it.
Uh, seconded if that, if that counts as a motion.
Jillian, does that count as a motion?
I think that's fine, did somebody read it into the record earlier?
Oh.
No, we did not read it into the record, but I will put, this is to certify that, add a duly, do you have to read that whole part or just the three voted?
You can just read the three.
Alright, voted to ratify the board's June sixteenth, twenty twenty vote to release the security for the full amount of item ten and all but a five percent retention for items six and seven under the tri-party agreement, reducing the escrow sum under the tri-party agreement to sixty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and issue a certificate of completion for such work. Voted to, to issue a partial release for lot four and lot five of the subdivision substantially in the form of the partial release for lots one through three of the subdivision recorded with registry and book seventy-four thousand hundred and fifty-nine slash four ninety-four, and voted to authorize a chair of the board to execute such certificate of completion and partial release, and to take any other actions that are reasonably necessary in connection therewith. We have a motion, a second, discussion, roll call vote please.
Hannah, I.
Juris, I.
Meister, I.
Cheryl, are you there?
I'm sorry, I was muted, Wolf, I.
Bun Mary, I, motion passes five oh. On all, uh, three of those as one. Uh, thank you very much Jillian for your time and sorry about the mishap on the, uh, time. Um, let us move on to our budget, please. I'm going to, most likely we will not be getting to the minutes. Um, and then we'll be going to, um, after we're done with the budget, going to the ANR three, five, Loring Court. Unless you'd like to do that first and then come back to the budget.
Uh, Heather, I didn't get any minutes.
I didn't either, so that's why I'm striking it from the agenda.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Um, I'm gonna say, let's do the budget, that's, we just have to get the budget done.
Yep, sounds good. Alright, let's go, let's start the conversation, Brian, do you wanna pull it up?
I'm pulling it up right now.
So, while you're pulling it up, one thing I noticed is that there are a number of categories we don't seem to spend much money on. So, can we simply ask for the same amount and? So, can we simply ask for the same amount and shift them in other places? Cause we won't be getting any more money from the town, but we might actually use some of the stuff we don't normally use.
Sorry, I missed out.
Well, Brian's bringing that up, Dea, were there particular lines?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood what Brian said. Yeah, well, um, we have printing and reproduction, which apparently we've only used very little of. Um, we don't do a lot of advertising, I don't know if that'll change. Um, that was-
That has to do with, that has to do with a lot of our hearings. The president, our hearings.
Okay, wait, no, hold on, hold on, so it's, our hearings, we don't pay for, the applicant, the applicant pays for, um, the, all of our C P D, you know, all of our special permit hearings, all of that. We do pay for our town meeting hearings, which are, you know, maybe two hundred dollars a year, or sorry, two hundred dollars, um, a, a meeting, so you're somewhere between it, like, it's about five hundred dollars a year, just for, just to do for, for town meeting, and then we have other, when we had more event, more in-person events, there, and, and other, um, things that required advertising, we did dip into that budget. Or just, you know, when we were doing more events related to the housing production plan, for example, we would dip into that sometimes, so it's kind of a, it goes back and forth, in terms of when we use it.
They will be working on North Main Street, will we wanna do anything there?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we're gonna wanna use it there, I also think when the master plan, uh, implementation committee gets going, they will probably be tapping a little bit into that as well, and we'll be supporting them with our budget at this time. They won't have a budget to work on, they'll have to use out of ours, correct, Brian?
So, so I guess-
Sorry, which, what, say again, sorry?
As saying that the master plan implementation committee most likely will have to tap out of ours, so if they're doing, um, they wanna do advertisers or something for something they're working on, they also will have to be using inside of our budget as well.
Yeah, I think, uh, I, that's something we need to talk to Lisa about, because I have no idea what her budget is looking like, but obviously, um, I, I guess it was about eighteen, it was maybe eighteen months ago, when we were doing, um, the override budget, and there was gonna be a certain amount of money to implement the master plan, and it was a large sum, it was potentially a hundred thousand dollars. So that's something that we need to, we, we can certainly request, and the number can change, it's not like whatever numbers we put in now are, are done. Um, but it starts the conversation, and we can even put that in as a note, uh, saying that, well, we would need this for master plan, but we were also, we wanna know whether or not some of that money is gonna be coming from the manager's office to implement the master plan, cause that was kind of what was proma, or, that was discussed.
That's a good point. Um, so if we wanna, I think, then maybe we should start earmarking. Um, so, looking under supplies and materials, we don't seem to use that a much, that much, so, um, printing and reproduction for the master plan, certainly, we, I'm surprised we only used sixty-six dollars last year. Um, or was it the year before, I'm getting confused?
Yeah, that was the year before.
So we don't have, do we have actuals for this past year, or is, are they so biased that it doesn't matter, cause of COVID?
Um, I, so, uh, hold on a second.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just go after the elephant in the room, Dea, because I always, this always happens to me, is that I come in and I advocate to cut our budget and hold it tight, and then like the next year, we go to FinCom, and then they're like, no, we're not gonna give you, like, then we're like, come back and say, okay, well, we need the money for our professional services, cause we cut that because of the master plan, and we knew we weren't gonna use it, and now they're like, no, we're not gonna give you the money. So I just, whenever we take money out, we have to be really cautious, because I'm trying, I've always tried to hold that budget as tight as, as low as we can, and then it bites us the following year, when we have to raise one category, then they sit there and harp over, well, why do you need, you know, why is Brian the rebel? And it's like, well, because to get, continue with this, right, so then they're like, okay.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Heather, I'm not asking to remove the money, I'm asking to shift it, shift it to someplace else where we need it more.
It, we, we could do that and shift it around, um, like to, oh, services or something, but at the same time, they're looking at it line item by line. So if we are gonna shift it, we have to, really good case.
Just, just so you, um, how budgeting, how the municipal budget works, is that as long as we don't spend more, the only thing that, you know, personal services and professional services have to be separate, we can't use one for the other. But all of this money, we can use for anything at all times, um, obviously, this is how it's been budgeted. It's, we would have to, like, for instance, if we wanted to, towards the end of the year, take however many thousands of dollars out of advertising and put it into something else, we can do that through a, a FinCom meeting. Uh, we've done that actually, two or three times in the past. So, just so you know, that just through, this is more of a general comment about budgets, that just because it's in that, um, line item, it, it, we can still use that money within the, within the budget for other items, and that does happen regularly.
Except for professional services.
Correct. Uh, no, 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 professional, I'm saying you can't, you can't pay me out, uh, the, the person, personnel services, you can't, you couldn't pay me out of professional services, for example.
But we could move a thousand dollars.
You could move any, you can request it, uh, a, a, and, but there's no real reason why it wouldn't, why, um, unless it's, I think it's egregious or whatever. We have a very small budget, like a very small budget compared to, compared to, you know, we're a hundred and fifty for the total, the total, everything. All-in, Recording Secretary, I mean, everything. So, uh, this one that's highlighted, by the way, the E, is what, is F Y twenty actual?
When did F Y twenty end?
F Y twenty, um, ended in, uh, June thirtieth of twenty.
Okay, so that makes somewhat of a sense, okay.
So, yeah, this is, this is basically, you know, near a full year, and then for four months of COVID.
Okay, and the reason I'm confused is cause we got money to do the master plan separately, and all of our advertising and all that other stuff we did then, not advertising, but all the materials was covered under that, which is why we didn't spend an awful lot on supplies and materials.
Correct, so that was, exactly, yes.
Okay, okay, so-
Go ahead.
Nope, I'm done.
Um, Brian, so obviously, there's not gonna be travel, um, to get you to the, um, planning conventions, um, uh, but however, it says tuition there, but I think it actually should be, um, continuing education. Is that pretty much with the same thing, and move, if we are gonna move anything, I'd like to move, although you also, you need a travel budget as well, so when you go into Boston, or?
I'm, no, it, it's all, so that's all the way of the dodo at the moment, um, but there is, there are still, obviously, um, some fees for webinars and that type of thing, it's obviously more going towards that, but it's significantly less. Um, I just have a feeling that, you know, a lot of those monthly meetings, there's just gonna be a lot more zooming.
And they start January, they start June first, though, right?
That, correct, so thi- this is the budget, so budget season starts in December, in order to start in July, for the budget would start July one.
Okay, not July one, it's July one, so with July one start, um, you also had, need to put, include reimbursement for your licensing on here?
That's, yeah, that's dues and memberships, that, that's been the same, um, it's a standard.
Oh, down below, okay.
It's, it's down below, yeah. Well, so I mean, I, so I've put zero numbers, this, just so we're clear, I, thi- this is our column, H is the column we're supposed to be filling in. Um, so I've filled in nothing, uh, i- in order to have the discussion, just so you know what we're looking at.
Okay. Um, so one of the, I'm, I'm confused about two things. One is that, I know that we had, in, in your last review, we talked about you going for further accreditation, and yet we didn't put any money in for tuition. Which seems, um, backwards. The other thing is that you are, I don't see anything in here which would take care of the, you're, you're using things at home for work, and I think you should be reimbursed at least for your cellphone at, at some level. And so I think that needs to be in there as well.
Yeah, I think, I'll look into that, I think it's possible that the way that that works at town is that, that you would have, I, 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 you would have to, um, have like, like a work cellphone, like another cellphone.
Oh, okay.
So I'm kind of just like the, no, if you wanna know, I do not wanna have two cellphones and, and whatever, I'm, ev- my, my cellphone is not online, but like literally every person that we work with has my cellphone, like, contract, I mean, everybody, everybody has it, and I gave it out, because it's just, that's how this has to work, you know, my call forwarding did not work at all, we tried for months, I gave up.
Okay.
So the call forwarding doesn't work, and my phone is fine, I don't need internet, I have a computer supplied by the town, it works great, I get it upgraded all the time, I'm not using my own computer. Um, so I, you know.
Lucky you.
But yeah, thank you, but I don't, I don't need tech, um-
Okay, well, I just wanna make sure that, that any, um, personal expenses which wouldn't, you wouldn't normally have are covered.
No, so thank you for that, I think the only thing that we contemplated last year was, um, like, like you just said, uh, getting A I C P accreditation. Um, and that just, it just didn't happen for a number of reasons, I'm not sure why. Um, I don't know, in terms of why that didn't get in there, um, but it, the timing also didn't necessarily work out for me personally, so, um, but it seems like, you know, I, it's something I, I want to pursue and makes sense to pursue, um, and I think it can only help the town of Winchester.
So what, what's a good number to put in that column, or in that row?
Um, so, I will have to, um, yeah, I can, I, I don't ha- I don't have,
Yeah, just-
A good, I don't have a good, I mean, it's really the cost of the, of taking the exam, and, and, and then there's a, and there's a course before, um-
Yeah, so a couple thou, I mean, just the ballpark, it doesn't ring up-
Oh, yeah, oh, def- yeah, def- it's not five thousand dollars, there's no way, um, I think it's, you know, in the one to two, in the one to two mark, but I can, I can, you know, it, it's basically, it's the cost of, of, uh, they're basically crash courses that are two weeks long or something like that. And then, um, you're obviously studying for a while before that, and then you, and, um, yeah, anyway, so it's, it's two weeks plus the cost of the exam.
Okay.
Um, with this is, well, Brian, I still want you to purchase the, um, the Massachusetts State Building Code books, uh, you could do it electronically or in paper. But you really should have those, cause that just came up even, for example, like this last week. Like, I want you to just go buy it, because it came up this last week over the dormers, um, Brian got a request over a question about a dormers, they were going into the assessors, how these assessors does square footage, but really, what the, at the end of the day, the zoning has to go by the building code and what their take is on stories, and, um, that's kind of how we wrote it too. So you, it's a reference that you should have there as well, so I just wanna make sure you get that, cause it looks like you haven't used it yet. Um, but that's books and periodicals, and that, that should cover it for the electronic, you, the, you, you would want the electronic version, cause you could search it faster, so you could just write in dormer, and it'll give you all the code regulations for dormer, so you can see what, what is going on. It's kind of general, you, you'll, you can follow it pretty quickly, but it'll be a good reference for you to have in your possession. Um, and, uh, other items from the board, concerns, questions? Hi, Maureen.
I guess, I know things got bounced around a whole lot with professional services, cause we, well, I, I won't even try to reconstruct it, but it did drop, but the idea was, we were going to be going forward with a lot of other things, like North Main Street. So here we are, and, um, I'm sorry, I've got the print version, and it, I guess that's F Y twenty actual was forty-nine, is that correct? And then we went to thirty-five, which was the budget for F Y twenty-one, am I reading this correctly, Brian?
Yeah, so, so E was F twenty, F Y twenty actual, F is what we requested, and G is what we got.
Right, so it went down, but if we're going to be, I know we've got, um, it's great, we've got M A P C, um, helping us out, and we've got, we're putting some money in. But, man, uh, we wanna bring, um, Dennis in on certain projects, we need to, we just, I just don't, it's not very much money, thirty-five thousand. Is there a reason why we're holding to that in our request, or should we bump that up again?
Oh, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, but, I, um, I'll, I just wanna talk about quickly, cause I just found this out today. Um, it's kind of strange that we have not been requested, um, and I don't know what's happening with our goals and objectives, meaning that no board, committee, department, anybody has been asked during budget season this year to have goals and objectives, and I just realized this usually since session, but it's pretty hard to determine a budget without goals and objectives. And I realized that, and I talked to the, I wasn't able to talk to Lisa today, but talked to, um, someone in the manager's office, and they're like, no, they're not being requested at the moment. Um, I don't know what, I, I, you know, they're not, it's not being requested. Um, so I, I think that's something we should talk about, cause Maureen's really getting at this here, is like, well, how do we actually determine what this cost is, unless we actually have goals and objectives for the fiscal year?
Hmm.
So we know that work on North Main Street could be pretty substantial, and that alone would probably keep us busy. Um, keep in mind, we also have, um, a permit almost certainly coming through from Waterfield, am I wrong, Brian?
What if, uh, a permit, I mean, there's-
Waterfield's probably going to come up in front of us.
I would imagine, I would imagine, but I cannot, I cannot guarantee that.
Of course.
Yes, yeah.
That'll take some time, um, but North Main Street, let's start with that, so we've got M A P C's, um, well, you tell us, what do we have coming and what are we putting in?
Sorry, what, what do we have coming and what are we putting in, meaning from, from what here?
For North Main Street.
Oh, so the, the, the scope that they developed, um, was, um, was for thirty, was, we're not putting, we're putting in all of our thirty, and they feel they can do the project in that, in that, uh, within that budget.
But what about their, what are those grants called, that are M A P C grants?
Um, D L T A, District Local Technical, yeah, so, so they're trying to determine exactly how much, you know, how much more we're gonna get out of that, but they've, they still feel that with the amount, I mean, I don't, I don't know what that answer is. Yeah, um, meaning how much in time addition to the thirty K are they going to put in? Um, that's something that, uh, we were hopefully going to talk with, um, Josh on the fifteenth, but I'm hopefully gonna talk with him, I have not been able to. Um, but he was going to, um, you know, they just sent the contract, their contract over, and I, I had it reviewed. Um, it's just the M A P C standard contract, and we were gonna talk about, you know, um, well, having that, that initial conversation, I think is extremely important, it's unfortunate it couldn't happen next week.
So the thirty-five, you're saying thirty is, um, committed?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the third, sorry, thirty-five, the, we, we got an appropriation to do the North Main Street study uh, of thirty-five thousand dollars, and all, all thirty-five of it, um, is, you know, that's what their budget en- en- encompasses.
So it seems to me-
Yeah, double Maureen, just to be clear, we had the professional services of thirty-five thousand, plus we had additional money for North Main. North Main didn't fall into this thirty-five thousand in our budget, it was a, it was a, it was a pull-up.
Right, it's a standalone article, so we technically, you know, this coming year, we'll have seventy thousand, yeah.
Okay.
So this thirty, this thirty-five is in addition to the M A P, in addition to the quote article money.
Yeah, so we, um-
What we really need is a budget for North Main Street, which we really haven't developed, plus-
Correct.
The unknown.
And, and, this is an unfortunate timing issue, that we weren't able to get the consultant in before, during, you know, before the budget.
So, Brian, does that, does, do you know if the M A P C includes public outreach, you know?
Oh, definitely, oh, def- no, no, definitely, yes, of course, yes.
No, I mean, in terms of paying for it.
Uh, yes, yes, they do, I, I, you know.
It'd be similar to what was done for the master plan then, and it won't come out of our budget here.
Correct, I, that is, that is my understanding, and that is what the, the scope and, uh, discusses, yes.
Right.
And then who's doing us, uh, I guess, what's the design vision for Washington at Walton? Sounds like there's something cooking there, but I can't quite-
No, yeah, the update, I mean, that's a different story, but the update is that they're trying to hire Jennifer Goldson, um. And to develop an R F P, so that that process is starting, and someone obviously from the planning board would be a part of that, um. There's no doubt, it's a question.
Do we own it?
Yes, uh, to be on that R F P committee, yes, uh, without a doubt, just like previously for the, um.
Does the town own Washington and Swanton now?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, no, right, so right now, they they don't own it, but what they're trying, they they think either way, they would like, they would like to purchase it, uh, and and they, and I. It appears that the owners are, you know, they're they're willing to talk, and you know, nothing has happened yet, but. Um, you know, there's movement.
But we don't, we shouldn't have to pay for design for them, cuz it's a select board project.
Maybe no, but when Waterfield was done, the first step was actually design visions, and that's where there were. At that point, there were actually four different architects that was, um, led by the planning board, and for, including Dennis Carlon, that was our first. Um, encounter with him, um, but he was one of four different of. Architecture, architects, architectural firms that submitted design visions for the. Waterfield site, and it really proved to be, I think, in our interest, cuz it, lo and behold, it, uh. We moved it into our master plan, I mean, uh, to our C B D planning, and then it, um, was used for several of the applicants.
Oh, I I think that's a one or great idea, Maureen, and it does, but do we have to pay on anyone to do that? Will that affect our budget?
Well, we're talking about next year's fiscal year, so it would start next June.
Right, but we don't have, they submitted those, we didn't pay them to submit it, did we?
Was it designed, it it was a design charrette, uh, that we did pay, um, I, it was before my time.
Yes.
Okay. The thing is, there's those design charrettes were under the auspices of the planning board for C B D.
Yeah, it was before the, before the zoning was passed.
Right, but it was for the zoning, and so in this case, since the planning board. We would have to rezone that parcel, I suppose. I'm just trying to understand why the money should come out of our budget and not the select boards.
Well, I'm gonna jump in here. Yes, the planning board back did what, did, um, the Waterfield lot. Design visions, and as we noted at town meeting, that should have happened before they went into. Purchase it and define the scope of what they're purchasing it for, make sure that the best, highest use of that land. And what if it was, which most likely the the studies would have came back with a component of, um, housing, but with that. It would have provided more information about what could be there, what potential that site has. We are not in the same relationship that we were back then with the select board. They seem to be just going. Doing their thing, so, um, for us to come in and say, well, we're gonna do a visioning on this. I don't think it's gonna be welcomed with open arms, uh, I don't know how to put it.
I I I wouldn't recommend we do it either, you know.
Um, I think they wanna do what they wanna do at Washington and Swanton, and they just want us to support whatever that may be, um. But, uh, I'm I'm positive that it sounds like they're making some headway on the negotiations of that site, so maybe. They won't need to use eminent domain, um, cuz that will lock that site up, I think, for a while. But anyway, um, I don't anticipate Maureen that they would ever. Say, yeah, planning board, take it and figure out the best and highest use for, um, housing. And how to do that, and what that looks like. I don't think they want to. They would like to.
There'll be a new chair probably in the spring. It just seems like this is actually, it's a, it really is a planning issue, and. Uh, leading, um, I mean, go back to what the planning board does, and then the master plan is the growth and development of the town. Um, it's, there's, thi- this is not wandering into some place where we don't have any legal or whatever, um, of appropriate authority. Um, we do, and it would be in the interest of anybody submitting a project, if it can be. Uh, what, if there can be some visuals that relate to. I'm not talking about use necessarily, I think every, actually, I think everybody agrees it should be some kind of mixed use. Um, whether it's forty B or not, forty B upstairs doesn't much matter. Uh, what we've seen with Waterfield is that the design vision can be met, but I think. There are edges, there's some, uh, terrain change, is sloping on the site, it's what goes on Washington, you know, at the corner, where's the parking go and so on. I think there could be some benefit, but, um, I appreciate your point, Heather, but things may, you know, uh, change. Uh, in the next few months.
With that in mind, I mean, a design visioning for that site would be incredibly helpful and. Would help guide it and make sure that what is produced thereafter is in line with the neighborhood and is. Supportive of the neighborhood versus slammed in the neighborhood. Um, I, I'm not, I just, I don't know how, so you're saying put money in our budget for that. But before we even put it in our budget, we should be having a conversation with the select board, saying, we want to do this before you proceed further.
When you say what you would want, meaning a similar process with, with. Yeah, I would just, what what type of process, uh, meaning a similar one that we would be doing essentially for North Main Street, just straight up visioning. A visioning process, not necessarily, I mean, I, we we had, we basically hired three or four design firms. Come up with ideas, it was different, it was, yeah, different thing.
Yeah, um, the main point is because the site is, it it's not actually flat. And that in itself is interesting, cuz it's sloped down. Um, boy, I remember looking at it with the C V S project and trying to, you know, what what you can do with that slope. It's just the way it is with Waterfield, um, brings some questions, and what's the scale, what's the height? Um, I think a roof line, those are things that we could be, but this is visual, as John Goldson typically. Frankly, even in the master plan, there was nothing, nothing in the entire master plan, uh, that showed you potential build out.
Yeah, I, you know, I I really, uh, Maureen, I think you've had a really, a really good point here, and and. If we leave the design to the R F P, then what we get is something that. The developers, their vision, not the town's vision, and we need to work in what we wanna see there.
What happened, I'm just, I'm sorry, I was gonna interject, that's what happened, that's what they're using, they're using a developer who wanted to bring in. Um, a friendly, uh, friendly forty B, um, and they're just pretty much using that design to guide them. To what they are wanting, and I think there's actually much more innovative opportunity on that site to do something similar, but more.
Oh, I, right, right, so, you know, even if the R F P were as open as the Waterfield one. The Waterfield one was, as Maureen points out, guided by the C B D design regs, and so. Even if they wrote the world's best R F P coming in for that site, the developer's gonna come in, but they won't have any sort of reference for what the town wants. So I think somehow we do need to insert ourselves in this process. As you point out, there's a political edge to this that I don't know how we, how we manage.
Yeah, I also think that it would make more sense if the town is leading it to listen to the community before they start listening to a developer.
So how does this affect our budget? Do we ask for, you know, fifteen thousand dollars for design consultants for the Waterfield Swanton plant? Fifteen, oh, you added it, okay, yeah. Is is that what we would put in our budget, just as sort of a, and then we approach the, uh, the select board and say. We wanna be part of this process, and we're willing to put in money if town gives it to us. We've got some skin in the game.
I think maybe, yeah, maybe that's the right thing to do, is say, while you're working on negotiations, the planning board wants to take on. The, um, a design visions for, um, either. It would have to right now, as of right now, it'd have to come in under friendly forty B, cuz we don't have it zoned right now for residential.
That's correct.
But that we would like to do, um, some design visioning to, uh, increase the. Understanding of the opportunities of this site while during your negotiations, but this we would actually use now, we wouldn't wait until next June to do it.
I was gonna say, yeah, we can't, we, yeah, if that's what you're thinking, I would say that that, we gotta re reconsider.
I don't think we have to, that it matters what the zoning is. Cities do this all the time, or communities. Do visioning for what they wanna see, and it is unrelated to the zoning because it's visioning, so.
Right, that that guides the zoning, that's the whole point of it.
Right, so I think now is the time to do that. Agree, um, well, then, uh, that's G B D, what number is that one?
It's G B D one, and just so you know, uh, we do still have twenty five thousand dollars in professional services right now.
Yeah, so, and G B D one, where else is that located? I don't have the map.
Oh, it's, there's like three other random locations that are picked, yeah.
Assets of it right.
Yeah, so. Um, and we've talked about this as well, that, and this is something this like what actually would be interested in, is. How do we, and it goes back to just overall affordable housing. Um, incentivize instead of just breaking even, or making up for all the other new development in these areas, is how do we actually do it so we encourage? And give opportunities similar to, um, some of those firms that came in to talk to us about the projects they've done that have been like a hundred percent affordable. Um, and how do you zone and look for that and vision for that as well to encourage that?
Yeah, this might be a good spot for that as well. It's not as high profile as the one downtown. So there might be less competition from the big guys, which is, I think, what drove away some of those hundred percent affordable ones.
It is also very tech, it's a very technical site.
Yeah, yeah.
Washington and Swanton is a little less technical, it doesn't have all those easements that you have to deal with, and the train and the. Bring in the price tag of development.
So then would you then say that this, this, the extra fifteen specifically for this is not, I mean, maybe we could use that, but. It's the wrong time, and that, and that it wouldn't necessarily be part of, you know, visioning or, uh. Starting with July first.
No, but there is the other area that I would like to do visioning in, and that is on Holton Street, and. Um, it was mentioned by the select board that they know that they are sitting, that the property owners of Holton Street are sitting there waiting for us to fall out of. Safe Harbor.
Yes, that's right.
So we really want to, um, jump on that and do visioning, so if we really are going to use. Things such as eminent domain, that might be worthy of getting a design visioning in place for that, to see if that is actually something that the town may wanna consider.
That sounds good.
Okay, i- if that's, so then if that's the case, I think, um, we could just say that. The thirty five thousand that we would normally use, this is for, um, legal and other professional services that are routine parts of. Uh, uh, of getting ahead of reviews and 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 doing planning related studies. Um, and then this extra fifteen would be for specifically for visioning of Holden, or do you just wanna say design visioning? We're eventually gonna get quite, we're eventually going to get questions about this, so.
I think that we're going to need, um, design visioning for Holton. And I expect that after the North Main Street study is completed, we'll be wanting to do some additional design visioning for there.
Oh, definitely.
So I think we will need money for both, and.
Need legal support in terms of rewriting some of the zoning to take into account.
Yeah, we need.
Under general operating expenses for legal.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I I think if we cut out other places and then this grows a little bit, um. You know, why not, um?
Well, I I don't know we're gonna cut so much, if we're gonna be putting in. Um, you still haven't put anything under tuition, so put in two thousand for you for tuition. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong column. What is the yellow column? That's what we're requesting?
Yes, the yellow column is what we're trying to fill in.
Oh, then why is, what's the white column, what's I? Oh, that's just you splitting it up, okay.
Oh, I don't, oh, I didn't do anything, I don't know what that is, I'll tell you that much.
Did you put fifteen thousand in there, and I'm, okay, great, okay, fine.
I think it just started doing stuff, yeah.
Um, a different, another sort of goal for the year, I don't know whether it costs money, um, but I really wanna go back and. Start, uh, putting some, uh, regis, I guess it would be in the zoning bylaw, and then attach a fee schedule. Or some kind of a schedule for anything, um, that, any, what? We, when we get the odd number of units, just the way we did with Elmwood, anytime you get. Just, you know, more units, that there ought to be, if you're not getting a unit, but it starts, uh, an affordable unit, that you start going to the. One more, two more, three more units, but you haven't tr- hit the trigger for, uh, to get to, okay, let's go, let's say it's twelve percent or something. You just, we should be capturing a fee for the odd unit before you hit the trigger of another affordable unit.
Oh, I see, so the fraction of affordable unit that you.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we've talked about this through legal, and I I think that this is possible, is what, is what they said.
Okay. You say it is possible?
Yes, they think, I have not gotten confirmation, they they said that sounds okay, but there was some reservations, but but, um, anyway, that's for zoning changes. Um, if the hope, if the hope, Maureen, is that you wanna leave in two minutes. I I I don't wanna crush your, crush your hopes here, but I I would like to fill this in.
Well, what have we got left?
And travel, please, so put three hundred dollars in travel. Hopefully, we'll have the vaccine, and you can move around New England a little bit better, um, add, go back up to printing and reproduction. Up at the top, um, the other thing that hasn't happened, Brian, um, is, has the master plan been distributed? Besides.
What do you mean? Uh, there, it's been, you know.
Flyer that goes out?
I'm sorry, what flyer?
The cheat sheet, like, you know, like.
It's only, so it's only been out to the library, Town Hall. I think it's just library and Town Hall, and then obviously the people have requested copies, um, and we've given it to them, but.
So, yeah, so we'll have to do that, but that, that'll come once, we'll, we'll go, when the implementation committee gets going, they'll probably start that as one of their main things. Is to distribute that to all the boards and commissions.
All right, then I'll just, we'll just keep that there, and this is.
Then also in the following year, we'll be having North Main coming in as well, so there'll be printing or production that, so just keep it for now. Uh, computer supplies, keep five hundred, um, something's gonna break just in case, and I think for that, we're good. How was that, everyone?
That sounds good to me, um, what is our total, fifty eight?
Brian, computer supplies, you haven't filled it, so.
Uh, it's filled in online.
Now it's in.
Oh, it's going slow for you.
Yeah, sorry.
Gotta drag. Okay.
Um, I think, yeah, and.
What, so printing and reproduction is different from reproduction services, reproducing services, I should.
Yeah, so we we've never used these i- in any of the time, we've always, if we've ever had to do anything, we've done, um.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think it has to do with very specific departments that needed something different, different amounts for different things, so it's just.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve a budget, uh, well, no, that doesn't include the prof, what do you call this on the top here? Um, permanent, and, um, so it's a, what's our, we need a total budget, don't we?
Please scroll down, Brian.
Or up.
Oh, up and fill that in, please?
Oh, sorry, this is, um.
I have the numbers here, it's one oh seven twenty three.
One oh seven twenty three.
One oh seven six twenty three for permanent.
H two.
Oh, no, that's it, okay, sorry.
No, this, no, no, so, so this is, um, okay, sorry, um.
I have the number in my handout.
Yeah, I do.
I know, but it's not, I I know, but it's not right, um, so this, yeah, this is the, is the. Current step that I'm going to be in January first. Um, that is, that is step sixteen, and I'm not asking for a request at this time.
Can you just put the, the number in there, just so, I've, I don't know.
Oh, just to make it happen, gotcha, yeah.
Yeah, just so we can see what the, yeah, and then what about, uh, temporary? Who is temporary, is that?
Recording secretary.
Okay. Okay. And we didn't, do we, we don't have to worry about overtime? That always, that just comes in later.
No, so then it's this.
So, Brian, on our sheet, it says one oh seven six twenty-three for fiscal year twenty-two, is that taking into account cost of living?
Yeah, that has the one percent.
Okay, so can you go back up and change the number you put in at the very top, one oh four nine to one oh seven six twenty-three? Up, up.
Okay.
Right there, one oh seven six twenty-three. There you go.
Well, that didn't work.
That's weird.
All right.
There we go.
All right, so then that should now total us up to where we're at.
Okay, somehow we managed to take four thousand some dollars off.
Off of what?
Yeah, not off of mine.
I don't know, but.
Can you scroll up to the top?
Oh, contractual services are down. By a lot. Oh, I see, it's because, uh, the first column includes professional services are a lot more. Yeah.
Yeah, there's fifteen grand more.
Yeah, okay.
And then there's the cost of living increase.
Yeah. Well, I'm good with that. Maureen, you were, you were making, do we do a motion now or?
I'm just going to approve a budget request for FY twenty-two of one hundred seventy-two thousand and twenty, one hundred seventy-two. Thousand and twenty-three dollars.
Do you have a second?
I will second that.
Discussion, roll call vote, please.
A and I.
Chariot's eye.
Meister, I.
Wolf, I.
Von Mary, I. Um, Brian, the potential, oh, motion passed, I'm sorry, five, I'm just skipping right to it. Um, the fifteen thousand specifically slated for Holton Street, if there is for Maine, it would be under our base professional services of thirty-five thousand. So the fifteen thousand specifically for the visioning for Holton Street.
Yep.
Okay, and that is what we will tell then come as well, and, all right, so that goes to the manager's office. That is done, that, uh, was actually going to be on our agenda next week, so I will remove it and update the agenda to take the, um. Board budget off of the agenda and rearrange that.
Could we, could we, um, replace that with a discussion of, uh, design consultants for Washington Swanton?
Oh, that's a good idea, we should get going.
We should get going, and I think maybe, I, I would like to see, I know Dennis is doing wonderful stuff, but I, I'd like to see. What someone else could provide, just to see what the difference is. But, and.
So with that, uh, are you guys okay if I send a letter to the select board saying that if, um. As lo- as long as this like board doesn't, that the planning board would like to bring on some design consultants to brainstorm, um. Affordable option, affordable housing, opportunities at Washington or Swanton.
I think you should call the incoming chair for next year.
Who's the incoming chair?
Um. Blanking. Give me a second.
Susan, it's Susan.
It's Susan, Susan Verdicchio, is, well, she's vice chair, we're assuming that.
Assuming that, yes.
Yeah, that's, I mean, we're gonna be doing this prior to, right, we're gonna start this running as soon as possible. And the chair doesn't change until election, correct?
Correct, at least that's, they used to be doing it every six months, but I think they've gone back to.
Okay, okay, I mean, I was.
So, very, very quickly, to the interest of, this was the, uh, draft agenda that I had, uh, going for next week.
Oh, we still have to put the A and R unless we're gonna do that.
Oh, jeez, oh god, we didn't do that.
It's like a really quick A and R.
I, 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 yes, uh, and I don't believe the whole twenty day thing is happening due to the state of emergency, so it's not like this automatically gets approved anyway.
I mean, I would say we could spend thirty seconds doing the A and R.
I think, I think, I think we should do that, it's, then, Heather, you and I will talk tomorrow about the agenda? This is, this is what we have to do, this is what has to happen on the agenda, no matter, I mean, this is, this is what, this is what we have, no matter what. Meaning, this was got continued, we are gonna talking about master plan implementation. Um, so, um, all right.
We also should probably take up, um, the request for, uh, the petition for special permit in the Center Business District.
Oh, right, that just, yeah, that just came in. Yeah.
Okay, so, um, can I just simply, what's the, what's the magic words for A and Rs?
Uh, it's endorse the A and R for three to five long court, but I think we should at least get it, we should at least get it up on the screen, but I, I, then maybe. I am, I'll feel.
It's, it's a really minor thing, they're just shifting a few triangles of land. To, and so, um, other than the strange bump out on one of them, I don't really see a issue.
Yeah, I need to recuse myself as I'm gonna butter, so will you please take over the meeting?
Okay.
I'll take no in case there's anything thereafter, but I'm not participating.
Right, thank you. So, uh, I officially take the reins from chair, uh, so, um, we have before us an A and R of three to five long court. Um, and, uh, since apparently I can no longer make the motion.
Oh, Brian should just.
Yeah, oh, yeah, uh, so this is, I'll just, I'll do this super quick, I'm basically gonna go over the narrative that the applicant. Mister David Orico, uh, supplied to us. Um, so, it's, uh, three properties, um, it, there's this fence where it's straddling, uh, property line. So they're trying to kind of figure that out, and that's what this A and R is for. Um, and then it corrects the sidestep back, um, so that basically gives it a, uh, gives it the correct. Um, i- i- sorry, that it gives it, um, it can, makes the zoning conforming. And then, um, this third for, third reason you can say is for estate planning, so thi- this seems like it, um. It's, that they most likely may be getting cordon off in order to potentially be. Sold is my guess, maybe to, to, um, cause I think it's next to a, a, a larger multi-family residential community. I think it's possible they might be doing that, but e- e- either way, all, all, all of the, uh, lots maintain their front, the necessary frontage, critical access. Square footage, um, so, um, I recommended endorsing this A and R.
So, it's an approval not required, and I think we should just press ahead, and, um, I'm going to make a motion to. Um, what, um.
Endorse.
Endorse the A and R.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second that? Wolf, wolf second.
And so, roll call, any discussion?
Nope.
Roll call vote, please.
A and I.
Uh, Meister, I.
Wolf, I.
Chariot's eye. So it is four zero with. Von Mary recusing herself, recused, thank you. You can come back, Heather.
Back. Okay, um, wow, we did a lot today, everyone. Um, so you saw the agenda, how I, we had it drafted, Brian did most of that work, give him all the credit. Um, so, I. I think we're in good shape, we do need to as a board, not right now, but, uh, do need to respond to Brian. I would like to take a big chunk off, cause we have a meeting almost every week, it feels like. Um, so, uh, we will meet on the fifteenth and then probably come back on the twelfth. Um, if that's okay, unless there's anything really urgent, Brian, that you see.
Can I just say this on that agenda, Mount Vernon, that's going to revolve, involve some discussion, if not straightforward. So I would urge you to put more time on that.
Thirty-five minutes?
Right, but it's late, and at that point, things tend to be later, that really needs to be pushed up at the, it just move it up.
Well, we can either give it twenty-five minutes in the beginning, or we just move the.
Start it at the beginning.
We'll take the twenty-five minutes in the beginning.
Okay. All right. Right, so twenty-five minutes at the beginning, and is it better than thirty-five minutes at the end? Is that the?
If it creeps, then we can catch up.
Gotcha, okay.
And then, um, what was the thing you deleted, the meeting minutes?
Correct.
Um, will we have some or not? If we're not going to, there's no point putting it on, we can just leave master plan at nine twenty-five and then.
Um, I saw, um. Several minutes were sent to, to me that I need to review before they go to the planning board, uh, but there are several, uh, I think. Three that could be put on.
Is one of them the full dictation of the joint meeting?
Nancy, I believe so, correct?
So then to put that on at nine thirty-five and leave the big window just in case.
And we, we didn't wanna, uh, in, have, uh, design consultant for Waterfield and Swanton somewhere in there. Cause you took out, you took out the budget, and we're gonna replace the budget with that.
Um, you mean Washington? You keep saying Waterfield.
Yes, exactly, what you said.
Um, yeah, I. I mean, I think we could give it fifteen minutes, I could probably squeeze fifteen minutes out of it.
Okay, well somehow you, somehow, somehow you managed to get time in for the budget, and it's disappeared already.
Um, yeah, well, no, we, we didn't get in time for that, I didn't know how I was gonna be able to get the budget in there.
Uh, so the budget disappears in many ways. By the way, Heather, I'm gonna vote for you for town moderator, you did a great job of reading the, uh.
I'm up. Um. Okay, so, I think we're in a good place, we got a lot going on. We're just trying to make sure we're all set, if we, but is everyone okay with that? We met on the fifteenth, and then it re, then we came back on the twelfth? We go back to our once, oh, we're going to twice a month now, it looks like.
We, we, we can't, we can't do, we can't do once a month, we can't do once a month, I'm sorry.
Those days are done.
To be, I'll be the bad, I'll be the bad guy here, because then it'll be till midnight every time, guaranteed.
Yeah, we've never done once a month.
That's what I was promised.
What crazy person promised you?
Okay, you're gonna go, but Lance Grunberg once got Joan to count the number of meetings, this was when he was on the planning board, it was seventy-five meetings in one year.
Aye.
We're not there, we're not there yet, so.
It was horrible, I thought it was during the master plan thing.
Well, it probably, it's twelfth and the twenty-sixth.
That's fine.
Of January, and we'll just do it, it will do pretty much every other week.
We really do wanna get moving on Main Street, and actually, some point, we should be reviewing all these odd things. Oh, we gotta do the subdivisions, we really want it, I mean, just, there's stuff to do, but.
No, there is stuff to do, I just, I would like to take a, a little bit break over the, uh, holidays.
Yeah, me too.
Um. You're taking a toll on everyone, so.
Oh, um, speaking of meetings, uh, I've been asked to sort of be the unofficial liaison. Of the planning board to the climate action committee thing.
Oh, yeah, we need to do that too, we have to go reorgan, we'll do that in January, uh, we, we, we do need to.
Oh, we would do that in March, we would do that in March.
April, April.
April, sorry, April.
Well, I think they're starting to meet soon, so if no one minds, they have meetings twice a month too, so I don't know if I'll manage to make all of them. But, if that's okay with the rest of the board, I'll do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, but we have Cheryl, so we really should relook at that. We have a new member. Cheryl, no, no, we're, we have liaisons to all the boards and committees.
Okay.
And we need, uh, if we would like to give you an opportunity to be a liaison with some of them, so.
Well, yeah, because Be- Be- uh, Betsy's, uh, Heather, you took over Betsy's capital require, yeah, capital requirement. So that, that actually leaves Cheryl open to something, right now, do you have, you have housing and?
Let's not do it now.
Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, in January, we'll do that along with, we have also Brian's review.
Yeah.
Well, those are the main, main, really big items that we, uh, should take care of in January, along with obviously subdivision and. All the other big projects that we're working on, um.
Well then, I move that we move.
Is that Hannah and I heard? All right, motion to adjourn, roll call vote, please.
Hannah and I.
Chariot's, yes.
Ister, I.
Wolf, I.
Von Mary, I, motion passes, five oh, uh, we will reconvene next week on the fifteenth of December at the same place. Different Zoom link, you can get it online, thank you Wind Cam, thank you Nancy, thank you Brian, Beth, everyone, and my fellow members, we'll see you next week.
Thanks, Heather.
Have a great night.
You too.